Districts to enact new design standards for one-family and two-family residential development in the midcoast and review of a draft resolution amending the local coastal program visual resources component policies eight point twelve and eight point thirteen to assure policy consistency with the new design standards.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. This item is the return of the Midcoast Residential Design Review Regulations for your final approval of the appropriate resolution ordinance for transmitted to the Board of Supervisors. In terms of background, on August twenty-seventh, your commission received public testimony and tentatively approved a draft set of design review standards that were principally prepared by the Coastside Design Review Committee after refinement and numerous public community workshops. Also, in August, you endorsed a process to fast-track approval of these new design review standards. At this point, we are prepared to transmit the standards as a separate item to the Board of Supervisors, and tonight, we are asking you to approve the final resolution and ordinance necessary to do that. We are also asking you to consider the revised illustrations that are now completed and a part of the document. I'll now turn it over to Lisa, who will briefly explain the details of what is before you tonight.
Okay. Now, I think we're on. I'm Lisa Alizas, the project planner for this portion of the LCP update project. And as George mentioned, the main thing we're here to discuss is the actual, how the design review standards will fit into the county's plans and regulations. We went over the text of the regulations at our previous meeting in August. The commission tentatively approved those, the wording there, and this is to ensure that that gets inserted into our regulations properly so that we can move forward, and as George said, in sort of a fast-track fashion, and get them to be part of our regulations. First off, we need to amend the LCP, specifically visual resources policy, eight point twelve and eight point thirteen A. And the, how, what those provisions would be are in the staff report attached to the resolution that the board would have to adopt to enact the change, but basically what the change does is replace the Community Design Annual, which used to provide guidance on design for one, for single-family and complex development, with the new standards that have been developed to address those two types of development. And then all other development, multi-family and commercial industrial, would continue to be subject to the Community Design Annual and the current design review district standards. So the only thing that is changing then is the standards that apply to the single-family and complex development. For policy eight point one-three A, these are special design guidelines for the midcoast communities. We've proposed a couple of changes. First of all, added Yeremar to the title so that it's clear that the standards do apply to Yeremar. We've also ensured that the policy protecting views from Highway One still applies to all development. This is an area regulation that the new standards do not speak to, so we want to make sure that that still is preserved and still applied to all development. And then we've inserted the new design standards, ensured that they apply to single-family and complex development. And again, all other development will continue to have the existing special design guidelines that are, that follow in the rest of policy eight point one-three. Those will continue to apply to the other types of development in the midcoast. Secondly, then, we'll need to enact some zoning text provisions so that the regulations will be inserted into our zoning ordinance. The only change we are proposing to chapter twenty-eight point one, which is the design review district chapter, is that the new standards be inserted. And then I want to point out that, other than the, that the only change that we're proposing tonight, it's a little bit different from what you saw at your August meeting, is that in our subsequent meetings with the, with the design review committee, they wanted to make sure that revised language encouraging architectural style that complement the natural setting be added to the new standards. And this was something that we had talked about many times over the course of our discussions, and was sort of belated when we realized that language actually didn't get into the standards. And so the committee would like the commission to consider adding that at this time as it goes forward to the board. And that's on, I believe, it's page, it's page seventeen of the, of the standards. Staff report. Yeah, it's page twenty-seven of the staff report pack, and the new language is shown in gold. And again, it was sort of, one of the central themes of the, of the regulations was that new structures be complementary to their surrounding built environment, but also certainly that they complement the surrounding natural setting. And that thought had been left off in this particular section, and the committee was asking that the commission consider adding that. I also want to point out that the only other difference between the standards that you're to say you have in front of you tonight in terms of the language and what you saw back in August is that the recommended condition or changes that were recommended by your commission and also were proposed by the design review committee and endorsed by your commission, those have been incorporated into the version. Since we were here at the commission back in August, the committee has continued to work on the illustrations. From the beginning, the committee was very interested in having illustrations as part of the regulations so that they would be able to clarify the objectives and provide some explanation for the standards in a visual format. The pictures and illustrations that you saw in previous drafts were sort of preliminary, and the committee has done a lot of work since August to, to really refine them and I think perfect them. These final recommendations of the committee, as far as the illustrations, have been incorporated into the section that you have in your packet. And again, we have just one additional illustration that the committee would like to recommend to you, and that's with regard to lighting. It's on the handout, it's on the table in front of you. This was a little bit late to get into the packet, but the committee had done some additional work to come up with an illustration for, for that section and would like to incorporate that. It's on the table. Yeah. Can you bring mine up?
Lisa, while we're on with the illustrations, you're responsible for drew them?
Oh, certainly. I want to emphasize that the work that you see on the illustrations has been done by the committee with really very little assistance from staff. We helped them coordinate a little bit, but you know, I think it's excellent work that was done. Jim Rudolph, Demestority, and Karen Wilson, and all the committee helped review them, particularly those few, I think, took a lot of effort, you know, a lot of work on themselves to actually get them.
So there may be some debate about whether they illustrated or not illustrated, but I just wanted to acknowledge that's very unusual for a volunteer group like this to produce that kind of detailed work. I thought it was very high quality, and I just wanted to acknowledge it and say that it's, from a staff point of view, we really appreciate the work of you.
Oh, very much, very much.
Appreciate it. Get an A for the artwork.
And then I just want to mention that we do have a little bit more work to do with regard to the design standards. There were a couple of additional tasks that were to be completed, and that was the development of a preferred tree list and the development of a lossery. And we'll continue to work on those two tasks over the next few months and bring that back to the planning mission. But the, the regulations as they are in front of you in the deal are complete and ready to go forward to the board, and those other components that will, in further enhancements of the regulations, will come back to you, I think March was our initial projection to when that will come back to you. But that's still to come. And then finally, our, the recommendation is that you recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment supervises LCP visual resource component policies eight point one-two and eight point one-three A, and adopt, recommends that the board adopt the ordinance amending zoning regulations to chapter twenty-eight point one to incorporate the design standards for one-family and two-family residential development in the midcoast. And I think this is a presentation if you have any questions, and I do just want to again extend my personal thanks to the committee for their, I think, inquiry work and dedication, many hours of work and time on it to complete this project, and I think it's going to serve us really well.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Appreciate it. Gentlemen, any questions?
I wanted to compliment the editing job. I noticed somebody went through and very carefully changed all the witches to bats.
Oh.
Actually, I had a question on page eight of the document. Now, I seem to remember the discussion we had when we were going through this first time that related to the standard with respect to open space. And I thought we had agreed to change the language there to consider how a newer remodeled home will appear as viewed from adjacent, and I think the discussion was, do we want designated there so that it's not, we don't get confused with somebody's backyard?
Is page, page eighteen of the staff report, page eight of the, of the standards?
Page eighteen of the standard.
I, now that you mention it, I can recall that there was discussion about that. I may admit, I mean, it may not be completely, but there was consensus about making that change, but if that's something the commission would like to do, I'd consider it before that.
I guess I remember holding the document up with that inked and yellow and was expecting to, that one just jumped out.
So, the, our proposal back in the last hearing was that the word designated be performed in open space? So, yes, okay, just to clarify, that's the change.
And then just for my own, so I'm happy here with this, on page seven of the document, it indicates that Dennis and Creek Zone Coastside Commercial Recreation, the CCR district, high development may not exceed twenty-eight feet. Now, you'll help to help me out, that does not include anything on the eyes of the street map from the, did the circulation around Princeton the other day. Is that correct?
Oh, I think that's.
That does not defer to that, so we're safely out of that area.
Yeah, I think we're, I think that, that's, George will be dealing with that in your next.
We're safely out of that area right now.
Well, you bring up your question.
The answer is, no, well, not safely out of that area.
Because there's two height limits in the CCR district.
Yes, there are.
Yeah, the design standards don't, don't change the height, the development standards first in residential development, basically, to speak of the design aspect, but the zoning districts set the development standards, and that we aren't proposing to change this way.
So I can safely go on with that.
Which page of the document is that?
Page eight.
No, I'm sorry.
Page seven.
Staff report.
Page seven of the staff.
Page three of the document.
Page three of the document. Thanks.
Okay. That's just a renumbering, so it's not that. Okay. The language is corrected E. In areas east of Dennis and Creek, the height limit is twenty-eight feet. In areas west of Dennis and Creek, which is the Princeton area, the height limit is thirty-six feet. However, and the only residential that would be allowed would be the mixed use and the CCR that would be talked about later, and that would be allowed to go up to thirty-six feet.
Excellent. You answered it perfectly. Thank you, Lisa and George. Thank you. No further questions? Do we have a speaking, the speaker's lips for this?
Yes, we do.
We can, what? No, no further. Speaker's lips first, the speaker would be Matthew Clark, followed by Chuck Cozette. Is that fair enough?
Hi, we're just addressing the design review standard now. First let me say that I got a call from Fran Pollard, who was here this evening, told me a name that you recognize, and Fran couldn't be here tonight because of a conflict, she has family obligations. So she asked me to come in and get her name in the record and say that, well, Clark, she's designing the new standards, she supports the current proposal established today. And so my name's Matthew Clark, I live here in El Verona, and I would say the same thing. I think I'm going to review the standards and work that quite carefully, and I've gone through them in various different drafts, and I am in support of the current submission and, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Cozette?
So you have a little, Chuck Cozette from Montero. I can be very grateful, so I would just urge that you support the staff recommendations to move this forward as presented under the committee's agreement, as tracked to the Senate directed report to supervisors.
Thank you, Chuck. I mean, your word.
Hi, my name's Karen Wilson, I am the chair for Coastside Design Review, and Dennis, on behalf of Dennis Story, Jim Rudolph, and Linda Montalvo-Patterson, all of the drawings were done, were done and presented in a public format through the public process, although we did have to use our own manpower to create the drawings, and they were all presented in that format so that you know that they were, there shouldn't be any conflict, they were presented in that manner. And we would also like you to know, as a committee, that we're all in the audience, if you do have any specific questions as things move forward, and I am as happy to answer them. And of course, we do encourage you to approve them and move them ahead to the board. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. April Partners?
Good evening. I wanted to point out that as I read through it, I thought that the way it was written, the tone of the regulations, in addition to having a lot of information, explaining things very clearly, I thought it was presented in a way that makes the reader part of the process, and try to explain why these things are important, and I thought it was less, sounded less restrictive to me than definitive and explanatory, which I thought was very good. The tone of it, I thought, was very positive, the way it was written, this is just kind of on a technical basis. And also, I thought that the illustrations were just very, very excellent, and, and were able to put into drawing some concepts which otherwise might have been a little bit more difficult to understand. So I absolutely urge you, on behalf of the committee for Greenwood House, to accept this work of the community, and that's the last thing I want to say, is again, to applaud the community and this committee, who did an incredible amount of work with, with close support from the staff, and I think that this, in addition to getting us some very good community design standards, was also a very positive community project, and so I would really like to see the Board of Supervisors, as soon as possible, to move this process forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You men are rich and deserved, I'll say that. I'm going to goof on this one. Enforcer, is that correct?
Yeah, you didn't goof at all.
Well, my, I'm not seeing very well tonight, followed by, oh, Leonard.
I want to echo the thoughts of most of the folks who spoke in the forum. I'm a command CRGC on the work we've taken, and specifically, I'm Karen Wilson. I had a personal experience with Karen for design review capacities, which she was able essentially to avert a problem before it ever became a problem. So the work that she spoke has been outstanding, and Karen Wilson just walks on waters for reference. I support the design review criteria, I encourage you to send this directly to the Board of Supervisors as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Leonard.
I think that Karen and the rest of the committee has done incredible work, so I want to echo their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leonard. I think that's the deepest you've ever been. And positive, too. I shouldn't be saying. Do we have any more speakers? None? My word, gentlemen, I do believe we can.
We'll be closing the public hearing.
Do I have a second now?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine. What's your pleasure? Do we have any further questions of anybody here? Do we need, think, look at anything I need for it? Because I'd certainly look forward to moving. I recommend that we, recommend the staff.
Should have a microphone.
This thing is killing, it's turning on. Your boat switches.
Well, my motion was that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors, the staff recommendation is presented in our agenda package here.
Do you want to include the insertion of the word designated on that one page?
Yes, including the word designated on the page we discussed.
I will second.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
And Evans.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
I guess that arrests.
Candy, you can reduce this last, this last item.
Item number seven, applicant Sametel County Planning Director, consideration of midcoast LCP update project, task ten, evaluate whether residential units in the neighborhood commercial and coastside commercial recreation zoning districts should be limited to mixed-use development. Task eleven, evaluate whether residential units in the waterfront zoning districts should be limited to caretakers' quarters with a cap of twenty percent of the developed parcels. Task twelve, evaluate whether residential units should be prohibited in the community open space conservation zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening again. Tonight's meeting is devoted, as Candy indicated, to tasks ten, eleven, and twelve of the Midcoast LCP update project. All of these tasks relate to permitting residential uses in non-residential zoning districts. Specifically, task ten calls for evaluating the controls on residential units in the C-one and CCR zoning districts. Task eleven calls for evaluating the controls on residential units in the W waterfront zoning district, and task twelve calls for evaluating whether residential units should be prohibited in the community open space, community open space conservation district. First, I will start with task ten involving the C-one and CCR zoning districts. The CC, the C-one district, which is intended primarily for neighborhood serving retail businesses, currently allows residential uses subject to a use permit. There is no requirement at present that the residential use be combined with the commercial use, nor that it be located upstairs, and the height limit in the C-one district is presently thirty-six feet. The CCR, or Coastside Commercial Recreation District, was, which is the second part of task ten, is intended primarily for business, serving businesses, and it already allows residences on top, on the upstairs as part of the mixed-use development. The residential units, as I said, must be located upstairs, cannot exceed the floor area of the commercial space below. The midcoast currently provides limited opportunities for neighborhood commercial development. When a residential use is allowed to consume commercial space, as currently is the case in the C-one district, there could be a future shortage of commercial outlets for the local population. Also, the midcoast has much more housing than jobsites, and the jobs housing imbalance contributes to peak hour commute traffic congestion on highways one and two. A partial solution, a part of, a partial solution would be to discourage additional housing, particularly on the ground floor of the C-one zoning sites. Finally, the C-one district limits building height to thirty-six feet, while the surrounding midcoast city family residential districts generally limit, limit residential height to twenty-eight feet. Continuing to allow three stories could result in visually impacting out-of-scale development and conflicts with the overall community character. A counterargument to the height and jobs housing balance issue would be that by allowing three stories, we would provide more opportunities for residential rental units above the ground floor, thereby helping achieve county affordable housing objectives. So there are really two issues related to the height component of this, of this task. One is that to lower the height limit to twenty-eight feet to be more compatible with the surrounding residential development, which is also twenty-eight feet, and less visually impacting, and for even transition. The other argument would be, well, the type of residential units you find above commercial businesses tend to be rental, if they are rental, it could help with rental housing stock, and your commission's been dealing with housing issues, so this is, this is one of the issues that will be before you tonight, be before you tonight. In the CCR district, residential use, as I indicated, already must be above the ground floor, and height is already limited to twenty-eight feet, except in Princeton, so the height limit is thirty-six feet. So I'm going to now take each one of these, the C-one, and work it all the way through to the recommendation, and then go through the CCR, and work it all the way through before I move into the next task. So putting on the overhead, for the C-one zone, which is the neighborhood commercial zone, we looked at four, the four alternatives that are shown on the screen, and this, when I say we looked at, during the community workshops that preceded this project coming to the commission. The first is the status quo alternative, which would continue to permit any residential use by use permit. The second alternative is the mixed-use alternative, which would allow residential units in the C-one district, but only above the first floor with a use permit, and the area would not be able to exceed the commercial floor area below. And this alternative would require that the maximum building height be reduced from thirty-six to twenty-eight feet. The third alternative was the mixed-use TDR alternative, and this was a, an approach that we developed that would only permit residential units in the C-one district if they were transferred from substandard lots in the R-one zone with an incentive mechanism built in. And the fourth alternative was the no residential alternative, which would be to outright prohibit residential uses in the C-one district, so that you just put commercial and maybe offices above. At the workshop on this task, thirty-nine, almost forty percent of the speakers endorsed the mixed-use alternative, where if residents, residential units are to be allowed, they must move upstairs. Also, thirty-nine percent supported the no residential alternative, which means prohibit residential in the C-one district, and twenty-two percent endorsed other options, including the status quo and that mixed-use TDR alternative. What I'm going to put on the screen is the midcoast community council and staff's recommendations related to the C-one zoning district, part of task ten. Uh, as you can see, the, uh, Midcoast Community Council endorses the mixed-use alternative, which is residential above the ground floor. The area of the residential component could not exceed the, uh, area of the commercial space below, and lowering the height limit from 36 to 28 feet. The Midcoast Community Council also has a provision in its recommendation, which was, if, uh, existing residential units in the C1 are demolished or converted to commercial uses, any new residential development would be prohibited on the site, uh, irrespective of what is said in the first book. So basically, what the Midcoast Community Council is saying is, uh, on vacant land, you can have residential, you can build a commercial complex or residential above. But on developed land, already with residential units there, if the residential is ever phased out or converted, it could never be rebuilt, even though you allow it to be built. The staff recommendation drops that second bullet. The staff recommendation doesn't have to however, and basically, it's the same rule throughout, whether you're redeveloping or developing for the first time. And basically, it's moving residential, uh, up to the second floor. It cannot be at street level. Uh, again, the area of the residential above could not exceed the commercial space below, and lowering the height limit to 28 feet, which is compatible with surrounding residential. Uh, in this manner, the commercial uses can fully use the commercial space that's been designated. Uh, as I indicated in my opening remarks, there's a limited amount of commercial space in the Midcoast. Uh, we, the current regulations would allow that commercial space to be converted to a house, if someone wanted to apply for a build, a use permit. They could build a house, and we would lose C1 space. We feel that, uh, the recommendation, the mixed-use alternative, satisfies both needs. It provides housing, but it puts housing, uh, above the commercial area, and not interfering with the pedestrian flow and window shopping and everything that you find in the urban area. So, that's the staff recommendation in relation to the C, uh, to the C1 district. Now I'm going to go into the CCR, which is the other part of task 10. In the CCR zone, we looked at two alternatives. These are shown on the screen. The first is the status quo, which would continue to require residential units above the first floor, floor. Basically, the CCR regs were ahead of the game. We're, I look at this as kind of a catch-up. The CCR regs, we believe, were done right the first time around. They only allow residential upstairs. There's that one-to-one in terms of floor area, and, uh, and the height hasn't been really an issue. So, basically, the status quo, what we're doing, just speaking freely, what we're, our proposal is that we catch up and do in the C1 what we've been doing all along in the CCR. So, the status quo is, uh, the mixed use that's currently allowed. The other alternative would be to prohibit residential in the CCR district, uh, new residential, uh, and thus require that development just be for visitors serving and other uses permitted in that district, and not allowing residential. At the workshop we had on this, uh, oh, I should add, for people who may have probably read the screen, I have hand, uh, colored handouts for everything, every graphic that you can see tonight, I have paper handouts in the back of the room. Anyway, um, the, at the workshop on this task, 77% of the speakers endorsed the status quo. That's a pretty large, uh, statistic, over three-quarters, uh, which is the mixed use. Uh, the 14% supported the no residential alternative, and 9% supported other options that came up that evening. Now I'm going to put on the Midcoast Community Council recommendation and the staff recommendation, and in this case, the same. The Midcoast Community Council and planning staff recommend to maintain the status quo, that is, endorse the status quo alternative, which I, to restate again, the ongoing, the current practice of residential above the ground floor, the one-to-one relationship with the, with the commercial space below. And as I said, we feel that this was the correct approach from conception, from the catch-up of this. Now I'm going to move into the W district, the waterfront district, the area that you primarily walked around in on the field trip on Monday, that you did also walk in the CCR. Uh, this is task 11, the three tasks we're talking about tonight involving the W district alternative. The W, or waterfront district, is intended primarily to provide marine-related uses of support for commercial fishing and recreational boating. The W district permits residential units only in the form of caretaker quarters. These are units intended for a person who, uh, look after the property, and these units also could provide live-work housing. The W district currently limits the number of caretaker, caretaker quarters to no more than 20% of the developed parcels in the district. The regulation also, the current regulations also requires the caretaker quarters be located within the same building as the primary use, hopefully marine-related use, and not exceed 35% of the building's floor area, up to 750 square feet. That's the cap on caretaker quarter, uh, square footage. A number of Princeton property owners have expressed desire to eliminate the 20% cap, such that there be no limit on the number of caretaker quarters, well, basically, one per parcel. That, that would be the limit, I've heard most from the, from the homeowners, the property owners of Princeton. And to increase the unit size from, uh, 750 square feet to 1,000 square feet. There are reasons for allowing additional caretaker quarters, including, include providing increased security for the Princeton area, providing more live-work housing, and providing additional economic return. Staff is concerned that adding significantly more residential units may undermine the intent of the waterfront district to provide, uh, the underlying, undermine the intent to provide marine-related industrial and service units that serve the needs of commercial fishermen and recreational, recreational boating. Adding more housing units in this area could increase land prices so much that the preferred marine-related uses would be priced out of the area. In other words, we are concerned that residential demand would drive the land market such that it becomes uneconomical for new, uh, new and desired marine-related uses to locate in Princeton. Also, more residential uses in this area could lead to a shift in the community character, similar to the gentrification phenomena elsewhere. Uh, in particular, if Princeton became a quasi-residential neighborhood, there could be compatibility problems to the detriment of existing industrial uses in Princeton. For example, new residents may object to noise, there may be objections, new residents may object to odors and visual clutter that goes with industrial and marine-related uses. For the W district, we looked at five alternatives at the workshop, and these are shown on the screen. The first alternative is the status quo alternative. This would be maintaining, maintain limiting caretaker quarters at 20% of the developed parcels in the W district, and maintaining a unit size of 35% building floor area, not to exceed 750 square feet. The second alternative, the conforming parcel alternative, is very much the same as the status quo, except it would lead to a marginally smaller number. This is called the conforming parcel, uh, alternative. This would prohibit caretaker quarters on non-conforming parcels, and also reduce the limit, uh, to 20% of developed conforming parcels. Otherwise, it would be the same as the status quo. What this means is, it, conforming is affected on both sides of the equation. One, when you determine how many caretaker, uh, quarters, uh, caretaker quarter slots are available, you only count the development that occurs on conforming parcels, and you don't count existing developed non-conforming parcels. So that would end up with less total developed parcels, hence less caretaker quarters. The other end of the equation is that you do not allow caretaker quarters to locate on substandard lots. So basically, you can't calculate the amount of caretaker quarters using subs, developed substandard lots, and you can't place a caretaker quarter on a substandard lot. That's the conforming parcel alternative. The, uh, third alternative is called increase the upper limit alternative. This would, uh, this alternative would, uh, propose increasing the limit from, our existing 20% to 35% of developed parcels, otherwise, it's the same as the status quo. We're inch, with the intent here, it's somewhat of a compromise, the intent here is to open up a little, a marginal addition of number of caretaker quarters, but still keeping it at a controlled rate at a third approximately of the developed parcels in the area. The fourth alternative is called no upper limit alternative. This would be eliminate the 20% uh, limit, the cap, the 20% cap, and not replace it with any cap. So basically, theoretically, there could be a caretaker quarter on every parcel in the W district, because we're removing the 20% uh, limit, and having no limit could also be argued as theoretically 100% of limit. Then, the, and the other aspect of the no upper limit alternative is also increase the size of the caretaker quarter. As I indicated in the status quo, the cap is at 750 square feet. The increase upper limit, the no upper limit alternative would raise the cap to 1,000 square feet, uh, and would require a use permit, where a use permit is not required now. The, uh, last alternative was spoke, uh, discussed at the, uh, at the workshops, was to prohibit, prohibit new caretaker quarters altogether in the W district. I will now put on the Midcoast Council's recommendation and the staff recommendation with regard to regulating caretaker quarters, or the controls on caretaker quarters. The Midcoast recommendation, uh, Midcoast Community Council recommendation is to prohibit caretaker quarters on non-conforming parcels, that means any parcel less than 5,000 square feet. Reduce the limit to 20% of developed conforming parcels, that means 20% of the parcels that are 5,000 square feet are greater in size, and to maintain the existing size limit of 35% parcel size max at 750 square feet. The staff, staff, I'm sorry, the staff recommendation, number one, is to change the name to caretaker quarters slash live-work units. These terms seem to be used interchangeably. There seem to be, uh, different objectives. Sometimes I hear security as being the reason, other times I hear to not, to commute from your bedroom to your workroom and be able to live in the same place. And so, um, so that it's, it, at its inception in 1989, uh, in 1989, when other members of the community were proposing, uh, we had an amendment process, were proposing that he issued them with security. Since then, the concept of live-work quarters has become equally discussed. So, change the name. Number two, uh, prohibit caretaker quarters, live-work units, uh, on non-conforming parcels. That means that you have to have at least 5,000 square feet, uh, to have a caretaker quarter. You could still use all developed parcels to determine how many caretaker quarters will be allowed, but when you locate them, you have to locate them on a parcel that's 5,000 square feet. And then, um, the third part of the staff recommendation is to increase the limit from 20% to 35% of the developed parcels. Uh, as I indicated earlier, this was a bit of a compromise. Staff could equally support with the status quo of 20, but also feels that if there is to be an increase, uh, it would, it would be more acceptable to have a 15% increase than rate, than an 80%. Maybe 1%, it's wrong, but raising it to 20 to 35% would be more acceptable than eliminating the 20 altogether. And then, um, ma, again, maintain the existing caretaker quarters size limit, which is 750 square feet max, 35% of the, not to exceed 750. And now, now this brings us to the very last task we're going to be talking about tonight, task 12. And this is the COSC district. The community open space conservation district. Uh, this is often viewed as the entry or gateway to El Granada, and it's intended primarily to provide low-益存性 development that best preserves the visual and open characteristics of the area, of that area. Uh, the COSC district permits agriculture, public recreation, nurseries, commercial recreation, institutional facilities, and single-family residences. The residential height limit is 16 feet. There are 11 parcels located in the COSC district. Nine are vacant, two are developed, and one, one, one of the developed parcels is for the residents and one for the school. The issue here is focusing in on whether residences, single-family residences, should be continued to be permitted in the COSC district. A number of Midcoast residences, residences, sorry, a number of Midcoast residents are opposed to permitting houses in the COSC, with the belief that it would adversely affect the appearance and feel of the community, and that this area is viewed as the preferred location for public facilities. A counterargument would be that the other permitted land uses in the district are too limiting and may not result in a reasonable economic use of the property. For the COSC zone, we looked at two alternatives, the two alternatives were shown on the screen. Uh, one is the status quo alternative. Uh, this would retain the existing permitted uses, including residents, residences. It stated in this staff report, I summarized a bit too much on the screen, um, what this alternative really is, is that you would permit, allowing, single-family residences until the Midcoast community has identified other land uses that would provide a reasonable economic return to landowners, and if those other land uses were amended into the district, then you could prohibit the residential. But until that time, uh, the status quo is to keep residential. The other, uh, alternative is the no residential alternative, which would prohibit new residences, uh, in the COSC. Um, so basically, it would be changing the listed permitted uses to not include residential, uh, for any future new residential, uh, uses, or houses that can move in. At the workshop on this task, uh, 52% of the speakers endorsed the status quo, and 48% endorsed the no residential alternative. I think that's the same percentage as the mayor election last night, but anyway, yesterday. 52, 48. So the community is divided on the existence, the status, uh, the community is divided between keeping the status quo and allowing residences and prohibiting residences, at least from the turnout at that night of the meeting, which could have been 20, 25 people. Okay, what I would do is look at the Midcoast Community Council recommendation, staff recommendation for this last task. Okay, the Midcoast Community Council, uh, endorses the no residential alternative, which is prohibit single-family residences in the COSC. If this was to be approved, it would make the existing residences their non-conforming use, and no new residences would be, would be permitted. The staff recommendation is to maintain the status quo alternative, that is, continue to permit single-family residences, but with the caveat of what I explained earlier, until alternative land uses are identified, it would provide a reasonable economic return to landowners, and if the regulations are amended to permit such alternative land uses, at that time, prohibit, uh, single-family residences. So it's kind of a modified status quo, the, uh, deferred prohibition. Status quo, until you, uh, the community identifies alternatives that are deter, that meet the test of providing a, uh, a reasonable economic return, and if the board of supervisors amends the new uses in, uh, to the COSC regulations, at that time, we would recommend prohibition. So, in closing our presentation, what I've done, and this is in bright orange handout, I've put together a summary of the staff recommendation for all three of these tasks, and I'll do, I'll leave you with this, go over it very quickly. For task 10, which is the, in the C1 neighborhood commercial... For Task 10, which is the, in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, this is where I opened my presentation, require a residential above ground, not to exceed the commercial space below and lower the height limit to 28 feet. In the CCR District, continue the, the status quo, which is to require a residential above, uh, the ground, the ground floor and, and do not exceed the commercial space below. Again, that one-to-one relationship. For Task 11, caretaker quarters in the W District, increase the limit on caretaker quarters to 35% of the developed parcels, prohibit caretaker quarters on non-conforming parcels, i.e. parcels less than 5,000 square feet, and maintain the existing size limit for the unit. And for Task 12, the one I, the task I just spoke of, uh, in the COSC District, continue to permit single-family residences until alternative land uses are identified, it would provide an economic return to landowners. And that would conclude my staff presentation and I'll leave it up there. And as I said, the summary is on the orange sheets.
Any questions, George?
I guess my question is, if we look at both, uh, recommend, the issue with respect to the Princeton area and we look at the, um, Commercial Districts. In Princeton, how many undeveloped parcels are we talking about? How many undeveloped conforming parcels are we talking about? That, that goes directly to, we're now at 12 and we go to this new regulation, what is that, 25 units? Uh, whatever the answer is.
I meant to get that today. I might, my, my review, I'll take it from my memories, I don't think it would. Well, first of all, the staff, with the staff recommendation, it would not affect the number of caretaker quarters because the staff recommendation is to count all developed parcels and just only locate, so if we count all developed parcels, continuing what we're doing now, let's use the numbers that we know about. As I indicated in my, uh, memo I distributed, there are 70 developed parcels in the W District. This equates to 14 caretaker unit slots, let's say. And of those 14, 10 are on the ground, two have building permits or construction hasn't occurred and two are available. Now, the, with the proposal, the staff proposal, that they, caretaker quarters only be located on conforming parcels, there's still would be two available, it's just that they could not locate a parcel that's less than 5,000. They'd have to locate on a 5,000 square feet parcel.
I, I guess, let me ask a question in different way. If all of the parcels in Princeton were to become developed, then we took 20% or 35% of.
Oh, I see what you're getting at, right.
How, how many are we talking about?
I don't have it off the top of my head. It was, I'll give you, it's, it's a number less than 50. Uh, I think we're talking about the 35, I should, I should have calculated this, the 35, I guess it'd be, be in the 30s and 20, it's in the 20s. So I think, I think it's about 25 of 20%. All I guess would be arithmetically calculated, it's a, I've worked out it's 25 units at 20%. So, uh, so 35 would be that marginal addition that you bring up to like 30, 30.
George, what I think of this sort of thought, like.
Yeah.
It's an interesting question. Um, and I have the same question, this relates to the C1 district, I mean, how many houses are we talking about? If we, if we adopt a, a regulation that says ground floor commercial and, and second story.
I didn't, I have that down because I counted all this.
I'm sure you did.
I didn't break it with three. I'll, I'll give you some thought.
And I guess my other question is, um, well, I guess it's a background, I mean, we've looked at the housing element of the county and established, I think, that we have a plan that doesn't require any rezoning or what have you in order to need a housing element, they're not going to be short. And so I, I don't find the argument to go to three stories and we could have more housing in the C1 compelling, um, but we're also in a situation where we have more housing than.
Right, I was just trying to provide a balanced analysis.
And so, okay, my, my question is, what is the compelling reason for allowing mixed use? Is the argument we make that this actually provides a financial incentive which would cause commercial to be built? Or is it just that this seems to be what people are talking about doing today?
Well.
And I didn't mean that to be pejorative, I'm sorry.
No, no, I can take that. Um, okay, traditionally residential has always, it has been a convention in zoning districts throughout the country to allow a residential component in a C1 district subject to a use permit. That's very standard, whether it's good or bad, and we don't have to defer to it, but that has been the tradition in American zoning, that in a C1 district, one could apply residential with a use permit. Unfortunately, there, it was never stated that there had to be a commercial use there, even though that, the general plan in zoning say that's the principal permitted use. And we have had requests where housing displaced or supplanted the commercial area and there, that space did not be used for commercial, it's designated commercial by the general plan, it's, uh, okay, so that's, the origin, the, uh, housing was felt to be acceptable in commercial. Typically, C1 areas, also looking at zoning across the country, usually were found adjacent to residential areas, they were like transition zones and these were the areas where you would find apartments, uh, next to, you'd find, uh, multifamily residential and apartments above commercial next to single family and as, as you transition to less compatible uses. And there also, um, has re, more recently been a desire to have housing along transit corridors, commercial tends to be along transit corridors, housing, and the, and the thought was, uh, if you lived upstairs, you could shop downstairs and then you'd have trips. I mean, there are a lot of planning reasons for having housing in proximity to commercial, um, and also the use of the land typically neighborhood commercial shops rely on the window exposure of people walking down the street and we usually rarely would have like a hardware store or pharmacy, maybe on a third floor in a commercial area because people walk in off the street. So then it's questioned is what do you use the upstairs for, one could say offices, which is valid. And I think that would be, and I think that would be the alternative if you did not want residential. I think also without giving, to give you a somewhat of a qualitative answer.
Maybe, well, George, Stephen, I just want to add that I think this was more about, um, further limiting residential use in commercial zones than it was about introducing residential use. We already had residential use allowed there, it was allowed generally, um, uh, you could have a site entirely residential, it could be on the ground floor, there were really no limitations on it. The, as this project evolved, that seemed to be the point of contention, that that was overly generous, overly loose, however you want to look at it. And so we were looking at how might we further restrict residential use in commercial zones? And I think we basically looked at the CCR zone as a model and said, um, that seems to work reasonably well there, why not in the C1 zone? So I don't think, I think that we never stopped and asked the question really of, should we allow residential here at all because it had historically been allowed? It was a matter of how should we limit it since it's already been introduced?
And another part of limiting is, we saw that with the current regulations, it could be a detriment to the preferred commercial use because if, I'm sorry, it could be a detriment to the preferred commercial use and you could end up with sites where it's built completely with residential and you never had it. So our concern is to preserve and protect the commercial possibility, but still provide a use above and typically a typical residential. To answer your question about the numbers, I have the exact number of parcels developed and undeveloped as part of those earlier tasks back in the office for the C1 zone. However, just qualitatively, to get kind of a, uh, area-wide sense of the magnitude or breadth of our C1 zoning, the C1 zoning in the Midcoast are these little red islands that are on either side, transit corridor, on either side of Highway 1, uh, down here, here and here, it's, as I opened my remarks here, it has a very limited, or, oh, not territory, sorry, very limited amount of commercial space considering the size of the community and the support, this is typically neighborhood, um, commercial. So without giving you the numbers, say 300 lots or something, whatever, you can see that in terms of blocks, it's a very small area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, we started a press, this, they add feedback again.
I can, I can work on it here. That's okay.
Uh, we started a press at our first meeting, uh, wherein we allowed the Midcoast Community Council, the 10-minute period, I think we'll continue that tonight, uh, if there's no objections. If there are objections, we'll continue it anyway. And finally, I think we'll also have, I'd like the, the Princeton community people to, uh, put in their two cents, whatever, 50 cents, whatever, as the case may be after the Midcoast Community Council. Then we'll call individuals at that time. Any further ideas?
Might be clear that, uh, PCA, PCA is the law.
Yes, well, that's, uh, I, that's what I meant, I guess I didn't spell it out properly, but PCA, is that correct?
That's correct.
I hope it is. Okay, let us start off with the, uh, Midcoast Community Council. And this, of course, I, I put you on your word that there's no double dipping tonight, uh, all speak, uh, you'll speak in both yourself and, okay.
So I'm, I'm not trying to double dip, although I do see both some, some current, some former and some new Midcoast Community Council members here, and I'm sure that they will elaborate on, on the comments. Uh, we transmitted a fairly lengthy write-up to the Planning Commission, um, months ago. And I'm not trying to go through that in, in great detail. George, I think gave a great presentation, even though I missed a little bit of it because I was just getting back from the Coastal Commission meeting in San Francisco today. Most of our recommendations were derived from considerations dealing with traffic issues, job housing imbalance, the desire, perceived desire, um, to create more opportunities for office and commercial development. I think you'll find, oh, I'm sorry. I, I should have identified myself at the beginning of my speech. Uh, this is Paul Perkadec and I'm chair, for at least this meeting, and this will be my last meeting in which I'm chair, in the interest of the council and the resident and the parent. Uh, we basically, the, the grounding for the recommendations came from traffic considerations, from the job housing balance, and from the perceived need, um, for opportunities in the community for office and commercial development in the Midcoast. I think you'll hear some speakers, uh, later on this evening, in fact, on Monday, you heard some speakers talking about, um, some local startups that have grown too big and fast and moved out of the area. In the councils' view, the C1 zoning district is an appropriate zoning district for, um, neighborhood commercial uses and potentially also for, um, office and such other research and development type, uh, development on additional floors. Uh, George very clearly outlined the reasons that there was not much enthusiasm for seeing C1 districts turn into de facto R3 multifamily residential districts, uh, by people coming in and applying for a residential only, uh, structure. We had a significant amount of discussion over whether, uh, we should recommend commercial uses only or the mixed use, and we eventually came around to the, to the recommendation that we should implore you, which was mixed use. We did have a recommendation, and I, I want to clarify it because in the staff report, George picked it up again, um, that I endorsed that the mixed use alternative notwithstanding, in the neighborhood commercial district, the council recommends that the county retain existing uses, but as the existing residential sites are demolished or converted to commercial uses, no new residential component should be added. And I, I think that our intent there was to indicate as a property goes through restructuring, that it would go to the new mixed commercial ground floor, potentially residential or office on the upper floor. We were not intending that a, that, you know, an old apartment building that was in the C1 zone, if it was demolished, had to be replaced with 100% commercial. So I just want to clarify that. So that's on Task 10. Um, and, and I, I probably clarified things for George. On Task 7, um, we thought the status quo in the Princeton area was good, in fact, generous. And on Task 12, um, the reason we recommended no residential use in the COSC zone goes back to the original Coastal Commission certification of the local coastal program in 1980. Uh, the Coastal Commission eliminated residential use, uh, as finding that to be inconsistent with the coastal act in 1980. Uh, it was a couple of years later, an amendment, one of the earliest amendments of the LCP, that residential use was brought back in as a traditional use with a use permit. And, uh, my understanding is the staff report, the Coastal Commission staff report at that time, looked at the impacts of residential uses on parcels of two acres or more and concluded that limited residential uses could be permitted. I don't think there are any parcels within the COSC zoning that need that two-acre minimum parcel size. And so we're recommending that, that there be, uh, that residential uses be moved in that zoning district. That's a very brief summary of material that we've already forwarded to you and I think people will elaborate on specific things further. I would like, if I may, um, because I think it's very relevant to Task 11, to revisit an issue that we discussed a couple of meetings ago and where I not have overhead slides, and I now have overheads for you. Excuse me? Uh-oh, did I just sound like?
That was, I did that.
Well, you did that. What I'm distributing is excerpts from the California Airport Land Use Planning Handbook published by the State of California Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics in January 2002. A couple of pages into the handout, um, I copied for you the proposed safety compatibility, uh, the proposed safety compatibility zone examples for various kinds of general aviation runways. Perhaps we may, or 4,000, 5,000-foot paved runway at this point, the county's, uh, airport land use, airport master plan, uh, is currently, uh, recommending an alternative that eliminates the displaced thresholds and would bring that, uh, airport, that runway back to its full 5,000-foot of length. And I believe that that would mean that example two, a medium general aviation runway would be the appropriate runway configuration and safety zone, safety compatibility zones that should be looked at. Now you see these zones, um, I have a larger version of this. I have a larger version of this, which I seem to have misplaced. Uh, but Zone 1, the capazoid in the center, is, uh, the runway protection zone and that's comparable to the existing, uh, uh, airport overlay, runway protection zone. And then the additional zones, Zones number 2 and 3, the inner approach depression zone and the inner turning zone, uh, are some new things that are recommended in 2002. For each of these different zones, uh, on the next sheet, uh, I've extracted the recommended compatibility qualities. For example, the runway protection zone, it's recommended that the airport actually own that property because it's a very high-risk area. Right after, uh, takeoff or just before landing is where a large number of, of general aviation and other aircraft accidents occur. And in that zone, the recommendation is to prohibit all new structures and to prohibit residential land uses. And then I copied for you Zones 2 and 3 as well, they're on the same page. Um, I copied for the benefit of the commissions, uh, the definitions of the other zones as well. I copied for the benefit of the commissions, the definitions of the other zones as well. In conjunction with those zones, there are some maximum residential density and maximum non-residential intensity recommendations. So these are just things that the Airport Land Use Committee, for San Antonio County, which is a part of the City Council Association of Governments, should be working on in conjunction with the county airport staff. The last time we discussed this, I indicated that the county airport planner is busy on the San Carlos Airport and not the Hattaway Airport. So it would be nice if we got an official, you know, if this material was prepared officially by the county staff. When you look at the Hattaway Bay Airport, this is out of Hattaway Bay Airport Master Plan, you see the runway, you see the existing approach protection and runway protection zones, and you see the community of Princeton at the right end of the overhead. You also see the scale in feet in the center. I enlarged that, and this is just the end near Princeton. I also took the example overlay and attempted to enlarge it to the same scale. And as you can see, the runway protections zone, approach protection zone, inner approach departure zone, and inner turning zone, that's Numbers One, Two, and Three, basically completely cover the Princeton area. I recommended earlier that until the airport compatibility issues are resolved, that changes that would intensify the water uses in this area are, in my opinion, and since he's speaking individually, not an appropriate relaxation of the current rules. And I would urge the commission to once again ask the county's airport planning people to move forward in having staff prepare this in a way, you know, if you take that five-thousand-foot length of that arc and lay it down over the runway, I think I enlarged that to the same mission. Although this was done on a copier, not, you know, the way that official airport planners would do things. So you've got the handouts there, and if you have any questions on this, Dick Corlone is the airport planner.
You did a masterful job, absolutely masterful. Next, I'd like to hear from the Princeton people, PCA.
My name's Carolyn Rogers, and I'm vice-chair of the Princeton Civic Advisory Committee. Good evening, and Sean, welcome once again. We want to thank you all for attending the field trip to Princeton on Monday afternoon for allowing us an opportunity to show some of Princeton through the eyes of people who have their businesses and properties there. As I think about Princeton and businesses that have grown up there, the phrase that comes to mind to me is economic biodiversity. We all know that biodiversity is both a hallmark and an essential for a healthy system. As such, we believe that the economic biodiversity that has taken shape today in Princeton should be encouraged and fostered. You know, in the course of the tour, as we came into Harvard, where it intersects airport, we turned back airport and then went right on you. You went through the heart of a varied, alive, and well-fishing industry that, as I had, I think I said in an earlier meeting, when cleared at a workshop, the head of the Fisherman's Marketing Association, Duncan McLean, his evaluation was that the land-based needs of the fishing industry is well-served. Anyway, to that end, and all of this tonight's tasks, we're supporting staff's recommendation that residential units in CCR districts be limited to mixed use, as it represents a status quo in Princeton CCR districts. As we pointed out in previous meetings and on the tour, residential development is not a given for that area. As a matter of fact, the largest single parcel that has yet undeveloped in that area is currently slated for expansion of the Harbor House bedroom breakfast. Furthermore, the remaining undeveloped parcels are not of the size, given current setback and parking requirements, as well as GSD policies, to encourage a residential component of any size. To the extent that they may encourage some studio, perhaps one-bedroom units, should be a plus, since these are in rather short supply on the coast side. In the W District, we're supporting the alternative that would allow for caretaker units slash the work units, a ratio of thirty-five percent of adult parcels. This would allow for some additional units to be dispersed through the inland waterfront area where they are needed. We believe, however, that administration of the allotment of these units needs some fine tuning to achieve a better dispersal of units through the area. One unit to a customer comes to mind as one guideline. Also, the establishment of a waiting list, it seems unfair, but someone who has repeatedly requested a caretaker's unit could be aced out of such a permit simply because somebody, you know, walked into the office on the day that, you know, the permit became available, especially when, you know, we don't have very the access to the data by which they determine the availability of these units. We'd also like to see caretaker units permitted on the non-conforming parcels, as long as the residential space has conformed to residential setbacks, as was designed in the units on, you know, over there on Ocean Avenue. In both cases, we believe that a residential component in the area makes a more attractive business development by providing an increased measure of security. I know that I've been approached by prospective tenants for properties adjacent to my workshop, by people asking what I thought of the safety in the area, and I know that friends of mine have expressed concern for my well-being in that regard, given, you know, that I've worked into many evenings. As I mentioned on Monday, I'm a lot for the residential units that are immediately across the street from me and for others that are close at hand. I was looking at the eyes on the street map, and, you know, there are a few, there are a couple of eyes that actually, I think, need to come out. This one, a tree went through last winter, and I believe that if it's demolished, that under current regulations, you know, that it cannot be rebuilt, you know, it's one of the existing residences, you know, historical residences. And this one, I believe, belongs to him. Am I correct that this is one to the Legion?
Yes, it still has, it still has a residential.
Okay, you're keeping it, guys?
Five.
Okay. Since the possibility of a more restricted airport overlay has been raised, and, you know, I was not surprised to hear about it again tonight, I'd like to say that there are a number of options being considered for the airport, and we believe that one of them involves a redrawing of the runway, of the runway for the area actually to be used, which, you know, if that option were implemented, would actually further remove the overlay of Princeton, and I believe drop the airport into the, you know, into the smaller type of airports. The plans that Paul is showing, or Mr. Perkadec, respectively, look a great deal like the plans that were being proposed in April of 2000, when I believe it was Mayor Coleman at Hattaway requested that CK implement these standards for this airport. At that time, CK declined to implement those guidelines, not feeling that they were necessary. If anything, given the importance of Princeton, as well as the sites along the airport, to future commercial activity for the coast side, as well as its existing residential development has come up around, I mean, I don't think that we're proposing to, you know, raise, you know, existing houses and businesses. You know, it would seem more appropriate to allow for the business development that we need in the area and to adjust, and if necessary, to adjust, you know, airport operations to, you know, conform to its changed environment. Finally, at the end of our tour, I noticed Ms. Barbas handing out copies of an old article that were representing the caretaker units there on the Ocean Avenue as a single-family housing. And so, you know, that came actually after we were at those properties, and we would have had the opportunity to pick up the flyers that are currently being used. So I've brought copies, just as demonstration that, you know, history aside, that article did get printed, that these units can and currently are being accurately and responsibly Well, actually, that is my remarks, and I'm just going to turn it over to Joanne McCullough,
Thank you so kindly, Carolyn. We appreciate it. Thank you for the extra handout. We have a plethora of speakers tonight, and go ahead.
If I may say very quickly, the Midcoast Community Council recommended a different airport alternative, which included the displaced thresholds. And Carolyn is correct, if the county does choose the recommendation from the Midcoast Community Council rather than the one from the approved alternative at the moment, that would reduce probably the scale of the airport overlay for the safety zones, as well as the location of them. So I do want to support her there, and I do want to indicate that the Midcoast Community Council has been supporting the Princeton community in making recommendations on the airport issue, sensitive to the needs in that community.
I'd like to make, go ahead, do your contribution. Before we bat around the term approved alternative, my understanding, and my understanding, and I think we stated this at the last meeting when we were talking about the AO zone, was that the Board of Supervisors selected an alternative from the draft master plan for environmental review study purposes only. They have not made a determination on the actual usable length of the runway, which will trigger, I mean, which influences or causes where the protection zones will be. For the study, just for the study purposes, they picked an alternative that does increase the usable length of the runway. My understanding was that some grant money was contingent on that decision, I'm not sure if that's true or not. However, it's for study purposes only, the Board of Supervisors has not made any indication what their final decision is in terms of the usable length of the runway, and hence, whatever the final protection zones are. That's all I have to say.
Go ahead and check for it, please.
Please. We're going to try and be very lenient, and you deserve it.
There's a, there's a, the difference between the San Carlos Airport and the Hattaway Airport is a difference of fifteen hundred feet in the length of that runway. The reason the fifteen hundred, the extra feet is here at our airport is because of an emergency safety zone that was included in, in fact, during World War II. That has since been dropped. We are allowed the same aircraft weights. Exactly the same restrictions are on the San Carlos Airport, as there is on ours. We have an extra fifteen hundred feet, which can't be removed. You remove that fifteen hundred feet, you remove seven hundred and fifty feet on both ends of that airport. That's a possibility that's being undertaken as the airport master plan is looked at. It's one of the things that we're going to be pressing for. It would take Princeton Avenue that we were watching down, which is part of the coastal trail currently, and make that viable business area, so we could increase density and have more visitor service.
I kind of the number here, and I think this is a fair break. Andy, I think we'll set this for three minutes, and we'll try and be lenient, but we won't try too hard. So our first one up is Burn Smith, followed by Carolyn Roy.
Good evening, I'm not going to use three minutes. Burn Smith, I don't know if I know her or not. I'm speaking only on task 12. I just want to point out this sort of illogic of suggesting that building residences is a way to conserve local space. And I want to speak in favor of eliminating residences as a part of the COC. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Carolyn Roy, followed by, I have one I can finally get. Julian Cooper?
McCullough.
Oh.
Did you just talk?
If I could read you right.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Julian.
I'd like to read one thing.
Please.
Thank you for seeing us, thanks for all your reference and support, we genuinely appreciate it. I'm speaking here tonight appealing to nothing more than the common sense. All the PCA is asking for here tonight, Mr. Promo, visit this virtually the only area left to us on the entire coast side for any type of light industrial endeavor. There are living quarters above shops on Main Street in Hattaway, as there are virtually every main street across the country, from Boston to San Francisco, cities that grow up with shops below and living above. Why is this proven time, why is this proven time and again success story now such a bad idea? Well, it's not. I mean, think of what it is we're asking for here. Seven hundred and fifty square feet to a thousand square feet, which may or may not approve, in living quarters, so as we can work longer hours and dedicate ourselves even further to our businesses. If this doesn't serve as lending some housing, I really don't know what does. I don't see how a seven hundred and fifty square foot living quarters is going to expand residential uses to the point where you'd have to really worry about that taking over an area, an industrial area. Most of the blocks and areas that have, in Princeton now, as you view, they don't lend themselves to people wanting to go down there, move in to live. They lend themselves to people that are willing to work despite it. There are certain people that are, certain people want a garage attached to their home. There's a whole bunch of tradesmen who would rather have a home attached to the business. It's an entirely different way of viewing it. You don't need a lot of space to live, but you need a lot of space to work. I'm a furniture maker, I've done it in this area for over thirty years. When I first started off in Princeton, I moved to Princeton because it was the only area available to us, and I worked illegally. I worked at a ten-by-forty-five-foot office trailer, and there were no other buildings around me. I tried to go to the Cressby Center in Pacifica, they wouldn't take me because of the noise. There was no place for me to work. I couldn't work in any of the buildings, since at that time they were all set up for drive storage. It wasn't until the county changed some of its policies that I was able to live in a chemical toilet, or they were true by having a chemical toilet, I could work in a building. It's been a long, ridiculous, hard story to try to get any kind of business going here in this area, and we are looking at the only area available to us. It's not like we can grow and move someplace else on the coast, there's nothing left. If we don't promote business in the coast side, who is going to pay for the infrastructure for everything? Frankly, we don't even know how to get, we don't know how to get this one across the effect of it. If we show up as a community en masse, that has been misconstrued as some sort of bullying and rabble tactic, and that's not what we're about. We're just trying to show community solidarity. County planning staff said the purpose of these meetings was to hear from the community. We came, we solidly outnumbered the those opposed. Yep, this is being misconstrued. Please tell our community how you would like us to better put our point. If you like, we will bring the PCA to you en masse. Our organization is made from not just the property owners in the area, but the business owners too. Given that the majority of business owners don't live in this area, we can have, in this area, we can have, we have no voting voice here. Our organization is the only voice for Princeton. We have not been canvassed by the MCC. We have not been canvassed by the MCC for any means at any point for any of these issues. Our organization was formed by the supervisors to help with the 1986 revision to the LCP, and we were instructed by county staff supervisor board as to how to continue the work for this LCP review and update. Please remember that we are the only voice of the business community. Please instruct us how to put our point. We ask only what the people who live here, work here, and own property here mandate us.
Matthew Clark. Apology. Sorry. Matthew Clark.
Hi, I'm Matthew Clark. I live here in El Granada. First, again, I was asked by friend caller to express her opinion, and basically she wanted to endorse the Midcoast Council recommendations down the line. That's what she asked me to say. To myself, regarding task 10, I would endorse both of the staff recommendations. Regarding task 11, part of advising the name to caretaker quarters slash live-work quarters, I have a rhetorical question. It's rhetorical in the sense that I don't think anyone has a real answer, but caretaker quarters slash live-work units makes it sound like they don't use the roads, but we know how many people do or potentially will be commuters, and in fact, they're pure residential use. So I don't think we should be misled by that terminology. Other than that, I would endorse the staff recommendations, except that I think that the live-work units should be kept at the 23% level in the W district. This will... They did a very good job of writing up about concerns about turning it into a residential zone and the current impact on local traffic. I think it would be good to urge emerging of conforming parcels to make conforming parcels for development. And regarding task 12, I would strongly urge that the residential use of the COSC district be prohibited. And I'd like to comment that a couple of years ago, when a mixed-use commercial development was proposed for the COSC district right across from the El Granada post office, I spent several Friday afternoons and Saturdays at that post office talking to people about it, and I didn't really talk to any El Granada residents that wanted to see the burners strip built on. In fact, the number one question I got from people was, how the hell did those two buildings that are out there get there? Why was that ever permitted? And so I think there's a strong community feeling about keeping that strip open, and I would like to see that prohibition in the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you so kindly. Chuck Close? Followed by Leonard Ward. I didn't arrange it that way.
Good evening again. Chuck Close from Monterrey. Former member of the Midcoast Community Council. Going down the list, I'd like to say that I support the Midcoast Council's recommendation on C1 zoning, especially with the clarification that Paul made about new residential components to be added, not to be eliminated. That was our idea when we put that together. And also the MCC recommendation on CCR. For these, I know our concern has been, and we've seen from the earlier tasks, we're looking at a build-out level that's already substantially higher than what we thought we were doing with, and we still have potential for increases of 21% provided substantial land or your process doesn't go through as the work is projected by staff. So the incremental addition of more residential units in the commercial areas is just going to be... Just going to be devastating problems that we'll be seeing in terms of the impact on traffic and environment. On task 11, I also support the MCC recommendation, and part of that is because I feel that there's been a number of... It's been kind of brought out that there's a number of considerations going on here in terms of how many lots are available, what would be the development levels, it's not even around the other commercial districts what those are. It's not clear what the final resolution of the airport plan is going to be, how that would play out for the area. There are also some other ones. I know I sent an email ahead because I wasn't able to make a field trip on Monday, but it seems like there's an awful lot of analysis runs issue that would need to be done before we can make a decision. And that would have anything to do with vehicle access and traffic analysis because there's limited road capability in the Princeton area. Where's the conforming coastal trope going to be going? What's the impact going to be? He's talked about the number and location of the residential units that are there. One thing, I think I have something to look at is the extent of the existing coast side commercial recreation area, how much is predeveloped, how much is serving back and supply, before looking at any other common uses for other districts. The... George points out in the staff report on P J specifically that there are some problems with allowing greater residential uses in the area because residential uses will always help compete now with residential uses because they're more lucrative. This was an area that was specifically designed to support industrial, the industrial and the re-related uses that have been designated for, and I begin to think that like that. On the issue, task 12, I also support the MCC recommendation in the COSC. It's not a group, it's a whole state.
How's that?
That is a big...
Thank you so kindly. Leonard Ward and Joe Gunter.
Leonard Ward. I believe someone just submitted speakers flip giving me her time. Regarding the apartment buildings in C1 issue, the way things are going around right now is very little commercial, but basically two blocks in C1, and there's already a number of apartment buildings there. If this isn't blocked, I will basically take over and all of either apartment building. We've got a very large amount of R3 land in El Granada that... Including a number of vacant parcels, there's plenty of space up in the building to become the apartment on C1. And I think there's only about half a dozen vacant C1 parcels left, if that. We need to see one for neighborhood commercial. Now, regarding counting all of all parcels in Princeton and including the ones in the AO zone to determine the number of caretaker units, there are arguments for why they need these as eyes on the street, and yet they can't be in the AO zone, so this is nothing but a transparent scheme to get more caretaker units elsewhere. If the intent is eyes on the street, then you only need a certain number, and you can't put them in AO, so that that area shouldn't be crowded. In general, I think that as is well known, we have an excess of housing, and if there's going to be any more housing allowed in Princeton, then we need to figure out how to reduce the housing elsewhere on the coast side. I agree with the staff's comments about ships or residential land prices. I think that's all I'm going to say on task 10 11. Task 12, as has already been mentioned, the original land use plan and the original LCP, Coastal Commission required the single-family residential to be removed. The community plan has it as part. And on the parks and recreation chapter, you're not going to be able to see it from here, but I have blowups of a different page here. It is indicated in this book as part, and I'll give you these two sheets of paper. One of them is a blowup of that second... The fact that... I think I'm going to go in order here. We have plenty of residential land in El Granada. We don't need eight houses in a view corridor. We're talking about a very tiny number. Those houses can go somewhere else on the vacant land in El Granada. This is a view corridor, it was very clearly intended for a community park. I have a panorama if I can get two people all the way down to it. Thank you, Drew. And what you can see is that even with a 10% lot coverage restriction... Can you point out where the houses are? That's 100% view blockage with a 10% lot coverage limit. 100% view blockage. As you're walking down the street for the complete length of that parcel on the street front of you, there is zero view there. That is why houses should not be allowed in here. Other uses are allowed by the law. It's only a taking use if no economic use is allowed. The argument that only a house of economic species, if it were true, the other land uses would never occur anywhere. The community of large overwhelmingly supports this area being a park. The staff recommendation of allow houses for now and till dot 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 is absurd because once the houses are built, the land will be lost forever. And we got hundreds of signatures... I forget the exact number, but we got hundreds of signatures in a few hours on... To try and block another proposal for building elsewhere on Burnham Strip. We need to highly value those as a park. As far as the suggestion that the community has to come up with alternative uses, let the landowners propose alternative uses. You won't hear any. They all want to build a house. As you know, I sit on the ground on San Cherry District Board, we have heard, I believe, from every single property owner in front of us when we adopted ordinance 149, every single one of them said they intend to build a house there. Nobody considering anything else. The only thing they want is to build a house, and this is just unimaginable as why this should be allowed. Thank you.
One moment, please. Give the chair a question. It would seem that it would be a little bit of a preamble to the question. Certainly, if El Granada were being subdivided with this type of plan today, the Burnham Strip would have been some kind of community of open space and would have been perhaps jointly owned by all the residents of the subdivision with an open space season, but that's not the way it's held. So the question is, what type of alternate uses are... Do have some economic viability? And what other... What between simply leaving the land as it is and providing the most minimal form of residential use that we can design, which may be even more minimal than 15 feet high? What other types of uses? And I'll also parenthetically say, it occurred to me that public acquisition of this land in the long term might be in the community's interest, but in the meantime, what other uses would be economically provide some reasonable economic return and still be a private use?
Clearly, I'm no land use expert. There are a number of...
Just generally?
There's a laundry list of uses given in the COSC zoning. I didn't bring this on the book, but there's a laundry list of uses there. The very last one that is very clearly marked as not referred is single-family residential.
But what of those do you feel, you know, would provide... Do you feel any of them... I mean, do you feel all of them provide?
I think essentially anything on that list except single-family residential would be acceptable for the community.
Well, I guess the question... And it's one of the questions you... I think in your comments, you indicated you'd probably prefer not to answer this question, but it's something I know I'm going to have to grapple with, and that's why I'm asking the question, is what of the uses do you think the contentions we made would provide reasonable economic return?
Maybe as a point of clarification, I could just enumerate the uses that I disclosed in my staff report, so you two could continue the conversation.
Yeah.
Do you have your list in front of you?
Yeah, I guess I understand. Of these, I understand staff's concern is that these uses may not provide a reasonable economic return.
Well, one of the uses was that there's Christmas tree farms, and if you drive along 92, you see an awful lot of Christmas tree farms.
That's why I'm asking the question.
But that's just an example that clearly there's at least one on the list that's economically viable. And I think that many, many of the ones on that list are economically viable. By the way, I'd also like to note that on the December El Granada San Cherry District agenda, we have a board consideration of submitting an application to reorganize as a community services district so we can provide parks and rec. And I suspect that the Burnham Strip might be our initial focus if we get that authority, because we would then be allowed to ask the community for money to purchase the land.
Can I just speak to this? Sir, go right ahead. And then we're going to take a, what do you call it, a six-minute break, so we can be intellectually viable. I think we're beginning to wear down here.
This is Burn Smith. That list comes directly from the LCP. And I just wanted to point out that that list, each of those sort of sublists is headed by the notation, including but not limited to. So in addition to the things that are on that list, essentially, I'm not going to say the sky is the limit, but there are clearly invitations to landowners to propose all of these.
Excellent. Thank you so kindly. We're going to take a six-minute break, and then be right back. When everybody is seated, I'll start off with Joe Gunter, and then followed by Ann Forster.
Could you speak right over that thing?
Okay. Honorable commissioners and staff, my name's Joe Gunter, and I live in Monterrey. And I am talking tonight on task number 10, dealing with the C1 district. I agree with staff that the first floor area, the commercial uses, I do not agree with reducing the height to 25 feet, and the mixed uses, mixed-use areas not to exceed the first floor of commercial area for these reasons. One, there is a documented need in this county for housing or affordable housing. By mixed-use, I mean apartment-type dwellings. By limiting the heights to 28 feet, you will be eliminating a whole floor of living space and housing. There are existing guidelines in place for the residential use and commercial zones today. For example, A, you need to have a use permit. B, in the C1 district, in the C1 S3 district allows you one dwelling unit per 1,250 square feet, and you have to deal with onsite parking issues. I remember reading in the San Mateo Times last year that the county of San Mateo received an award from the state of California. If I remember correctly, this award was for the innovative way San Mateo County used high-density mixed uses along transit corridors. Also, other counties should use this method as a model in their long-term planning. Would this not be the same for the commercial properties that meet the criteria on the coast side? On the Bay Side today, in the transit corridors, what buildings are vacant and what buildings are occupied? The ones that are mixed-use are more occupied than the ones that are 100% commercial. And I think if it's a commercial property located in there, a corridor, it should stay the same and max it out. Not everybody can come here and rent a house. You can rent an apartment, but they can't rent a house if you can afford it. Thank you. As far as the Princeton property owners, I concur with them. Thank you, Joe.
Ann Forster, and next would be Paul Perkett, speaking as an individual. No, thank you, Paul. You are a man of honesty and integrity. And then Jimmy, thank you, after that.
No problem. Ann Forster, Monterrey. I want to echo the sentiments of the Truck Boys Act, specifically on task 10. My inkling is to go for no residential, but I think I can live with mixed use. Overall, overarching points I would like to all seriously consider, again, I had one of the previous speakers who suggested that you may want to consider impacts such as traffic, seriously, you know, all of them. On task 11, it seems to be a very, very hot debate here. I'm supporting the MCC recommendation, specifically on the conforming parcel alternative. On task 12, I strongly encourage you... On task 12, I strongly encourage you to prohibit any housing at all, any residential development at all in the COSC zoning district. Thank you very much.
Jimmy Gunter?
Thank you.
Followed by Paul McGregor.
I'm sorry, Paul. No, no, I'm probably just don't want to waste your time. So, a couple of points. First, with respect to the C1 area, the gentleman who spoke a moment ago was talking about the relevance of a transit corridor. I just would ask the public to keep in mind that we don't have a Caltrain out here, we don't have a barge out here. We don't, Highway 1 is, if you think of Highway 1 as a transit corridor, then you haven't tried it. The process that we're going through for the LCP is actually a CEQA substitute in some way according to coastal acts. You must consider the reasonably foreseeable impacts of other development. And Paul's analysis of the reasonable foreseeability of the airport overlay zone change is, is not something that can be just blown off because it's not a, it's, they have laid an alternative, they have poured concrete on an alternative. Of any of the alternatives that are out there, it has more concrete than any others, and it will not be discounted. Would you consider potential impacts of the decision with respect to safety, which is an important part of your CEQA compatible process? With respect to the W, I believe that you'll find in Hampton Bay, there are areas smaller than your, oh, I'm sorry, with respect to W, I'm already seeing the realtor sign out there, so I think the speculation has begun. But I think the job housing balance issues have been well taken and well considered. I ask you to respect the position of the mid-coast and accept their recommendations. With respect to the COSC zoning area, I should just point out that in Hampton Bay, there are areas smaller than the area that you're considering that are being used in an agricultural fashion. It doesn't facilitate large-scale agriculture, but it does work with a smaller scale of agriculture, perhaps organic. So I think that the argument that there is no other alternative is, I think that it would be very hard to make that case. And I respectfully agree with, with Mr. Warren on that point. I do not object to office space uses in this area. I think that they, they can begin to support the job, they can begin to right the job housing imbalance. But the residential proposals do concern us, and the safety issues that I raised earlier, I think is a compelling reason not to, not to facilitate that. I think that the references to residences in the COSC area, as in the C1 area, ought to be removed. If you look along the coast in this area, which is designated in the coastal area as a scenic highway, I think you'll agree with me that the residences that have been built have not supported the new, they've, they've detracted from it. And inasmuch as there are viable other alternative uses, it's, it's not a constitutional requirement to celebrate that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I thank you for your time. How's that?
Thank you.
Paul McGregor, I live in Montero, a local builder, currently building a project in Montero on, thank you, George, Sixth and Main. Took me two years to get approvals. It's a mixed-use project. I have three apartments on the upper floor, one commercial downstairs. If you guys try to limit the height limit on this, you have to look at the floor levels. You've got 10 feet per floor level. First floor, 10 feet, second floor, 10 feet. You have a roof line, maybe 7, 8 feet. That's 28 feet right there. Where are you going for parking? Right now, as it sits, I had to get a parking variance to accommodate my building. Fortunately for me, I have a lot of slopes, and I could take and put the parking underneath. Where do you measure the 28 feet from? Is it medium measurement? Is it from the ground level? That has to be addressed. That's really important, because otherwise, there's no word parking cards. There's no incentive for anybody to have a business down here, let alone apartments or whatever. You have to have affordable housing. By, you know, reducing the height limit, you're, you're putting a lot of people out. So you really need to address the issue of the height limit. I think you just stay at 36 feet to accommodate the parking. It's really tough to get, I think, planning requires one point to read parking spaces per one-bedroom units. Am I right with that, Terry? You should know that.
Sounds about right. I should know that.
Yeah, I would think you would. It, it makes it very difficult to get parking if you reduce the height limit. So you should take that into consideration. As far as task 11, you really need to clarify caretaker's quarters versus live-work units. Does that mean that the person has to live in the building in order to rent out the caretaker's portion of it? I'd like to know that, because it, it makes a big difference if you're gonna buy a building or build a building at the same time. As far as the size of the lot goes, Princeton really needs to, to have some more eyes on the street. Right now, the, the county sheriffs are going through there, cleaning out the riff ramp, and it's a constant problem. There's people living on the streets, there's people selling drugs down there. And the more eyes on the street, the better it's gonna be for the whole community. So, you know, please look at that issue, because that's, that's an ongoing issue. And I see sheriffs down there all the times, cleaning people out, pulling people over. And we're wasting a lot of money by having law enforcement down there, you know, policing in this area when the neighbors would do a much better job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Every now and then a chairman, in a meeting such as this, has to sort of pat himself on the back. But in the previous meetings, we've been very liberal and allowed people to hand in slips rather lightly. But this evening, I find out that slips are coming in in rather amazing fashion, extraordinarily. To be fair, and since it is coming into the holiday season, I'll give you 30 seconds to get any more slips in, because I'm not gonna entertain any more slips this evening. I like to get home and get to bed before 12 o'clock. I don't really need to do that perspicacity, but I think 30 seconds is fine. Anybody else want to turn in a slip? You people are indeed wonderful and kind for this poor old man. Thank you so very, very much. Where are we then? April Vargas?
Good evening, Commissioners. April Vargas, Montero resident, and I'm speaking on behalf of the committee for Green Foot Health. Task 10, the committee supports the staff recommendation with the additional condition, I just want to emphasize this, that there would be no standalone single-family residential or apartment houses allowed. As existing residential sites are demolished or converted to commercial use, no new standalone residential components would be added. For task 11, we favor the conforming parcel alternative, which again is caretaker units on conforming parcels only to encourage merger. That would be on 20% of the developed conforming parcels. The units would be 35% of the building floor area up to 750 square feet. And I want to say I was encouraged to see that the listing for the unit that's currently on the market there, that Carolyn gave you the listing for, shows that the units and their uses are being much more accurately now represented to prospective buyers. I think that's a real improvement over what we saw a year and a half ago. I'd also like to agree with Paul McGregor's request for clarification on the live-work and caretaker, because that was a question I had too, was whether the residential or how the residential has to be tied to the business that would be downstairs. And just to remind the commission that when you consider task nine on September 10th, you did decide not to make any changes at that time to the regulations in the AO zone until the airport land use master plan update had been completed. Now, on task 12, the committee supports the no residential alternative and removing even alternatives, even the alternative use with the use permit of single-family residential in the COSC zone. One thing I think would be important to consider is the fact that continuing erosion along the highway adjacent to the COSC land in El Granada, which is right by Surfers Beach there, continuing, continuing to erode. And I think in the future, it's very possible that the highway's gonna have to be rerouted and will go through very close to that property. So I think that to allow residential units in the city, in that vicinity may, in the long run, be irresponsible. Similarly, any alternative land uses that require permanent structures may also be inappropriate. I think, we believe that the designation "Community Open Space Conservation" clearly describes the best use of this land, which would be as community open space, although other structural or temporary structure uses such as agriculture would be appropriate. Thank you.
Next would be Steve Lawton, followed by Delia Fede.
Thank you, Terry. I'm a landowner in Princeton, and I wanted...
Steve, just state your name and address, like, just state your name for our secretary.
Sure. My name is Steve Lawton, and I live at 158 Tarif Street in San Francisco. As a landowner, I can't tell you how much stuff I've had to clean up that's been dumped on and around my property. And I think it's because it's a dark, lonely place. There's just not that many people around to keep an eye on things. So I do encourage you to increase the caretaker's use of the district and maintain the, the other zone, the CCR. These caretaker quarters also help with the jobs housing imbalance. People say, well, that's a problem because they, you're creating more housing, but in fact, you're encouraging people to start businesses there. Because it's certainly easier to afford a building that you can also stay in, be close to your work, and provide security for your own workspace. But I wanted to remind you that small businesses are by far the, the largest employer in America today. And I don't think IBM is coming to Princeton anytime soon. So if you, if you want to help the jobs housing imbalance with what you have available, which, which is basically Princeton, the coast side, then you should be looking for ways to encourage it. It takes an awfully wealthy person to come in, have housing, and start a business there. This, in this way, I think it does improve businesses. I wanted to say that I'm not sure, I think the non-conforming issue is more appropriately suited toward, toward residential areas. I think that people can have viable businesses on a small lot, which are the majority of the lots in Princeton. I don't see the reason for having it be 5,000 per foot when 2,500 per foot may be adequate for that person doing that sort of work. I also wanted to say that there's always another airport master plan down the road. And, you know, I, I really don't think that, that that can be a criteria here now, especially when, you know, the date is undetermined. You know, we're, we're doing this review now for this community now. And I don't think that waiting for, you know, an airport thing down the road is gonna help. Thank you.
Delia Fede, followed by Mark Graham. To whom?
Leonard Warren.
Oh, Leonard, oh. I don't want to speak for Mr.... Mark Graham, and then Tom Casey.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Graham. I'm speaking tonight as an individual, and also representing my wife, who is considering a re business and some jobs to the Princeton area. With regard to whether or not there's enough housing on the coast side, well, certainly there is if you have or are a million dollars. I currently live in the Miramar area, and there's a number of folks who have million-dollar homes. Many of them are weekend homes, and most of them are in lots that are less than 5,000 square feet. In particular, I'd like to mention that, or note, my objections to the staff recommendation relative to the limit of the caretaker units to units that quote-unquote "conform," i.e. those that are more than 5,000 square feet. I don't think there are many units available right now or in the, in the Princeton area that in fact are more than 5,000 square feet. So while I respect and appreciate the idea of the mixed-use concept, and in limiting the number of caretaker units overall, it seems to me that it would be appropriate to relax the consideration relative to the size of, of the units and allow for caretaker units, as long as they are on the second floor and are less than 7,500, 750 or 1,000 square feet, to be on lots that are less than 5,000 square feet. Thank you very much.
Tom Carey, 2920 Woodside, Woodside, California. I'm here today as an owner of various parcels in the Princeton area, and also an agent of various owners. I'm here today as an owner of various parcels in the Princeton area, and also an agent of various owners. And I think if you took a look at today when you walked into Princeton area, what did you see? You saw an area, probably the biggest, a commercial zone in the coastal area, what did you see? You saw mostly storage compartments. You saw a few maybe commercial areas. You saw a few, maybe, one or two office buildings. But why isn't it developed? And I encourage you to go home tonight, drive through the Princeton area. And I'm sure if you take a good look and you drive home tonight, you'll see what the problem is with Princeton. You have an area that's zoned that's not developed. You need office, you need research, you need development uses in that area. 28 feet is not gonna do it. You have 28 feet, I'm gonna have to dig underneath the ground to provide for parking. Parking is a big issue, and it's gonna become a bigger issue in the Princeton area. If you give me, if you give us the 36 feet, you can have the live and work-in-locked units, you can have the office units, you can have the research, development, office use, but you can't have it at 28 feet.
Just as a point of clarification, there is no proposal to reduce the height from 36 feet in the Princeton area. It's only for the C1 area.
C1 area? How big is the C1 area in Princeton?
It's not in Princeton, it's in the other side.
I just want to, because that's the reason I'm here, I just want to encourage that we have 36 feet units, and that's the reason I'm here, I don't want to see it lost. And hopefully, but what I'm really concerned about is though, the office use component is not through many of, many of these areas of Princeton. It's all marine-related. I am one of the first proponents of marine-related uses, but they're not there. They don't support the land, unfortunately. If they're there, I'd put it out. There's just not a use for it right now, and there's not enough office use for all the zoning uses in the Princeton area. It needs to be looked at, the staff has not looked at it. The staff has not proposed particularly about the office development, research, and development use. We're looking at people to work here on the coast side, not over the hill. Why should, why can we have an area that's zoned here as commercial? Why can't they have commercial uses for office research development here? Why do they have to drive to Redwood City? Why do they have to drive to Sunnyvale? Because most of the houses that I develop and use, they work in Palo Alto, they work in Sunnyvale, and they tell me, Tom, I can't find a job out here. There's no office use out here. There's no any type of development use, there's no, there's no office for an architect, an accountant, a surveyor, any type of, you know, of, you know, of an area. There's no doctor uses out here. Take a look, and I want you to drive home tonight, see what's out there right now. There's, the off, the proposed use is wrong. Staff needs to research it, they need to have a figure of the purpose use. And I think you'll see an area in five or seven years, there'll be a commercial viable use that will pay the taxes for this county and provide a better, I think, environment for this, for this, for this area. Just, I want you to take a look before you go home.
Our last speaker for the evening is Howard Lieberman. I am going to...
I think somehow we missed Rick.
We missed, oh, Rick?
I was the first to be just left here tonight. I was here early.
I was just gonna say I'm fallible and I did miss somebody, and therefore...
It's too early.
We got two last...
I got here on time. That's your mistake.
Your problem. Go right ahead. I only said you wanted 60 seconds.
Yeah, I don't understand. Yeah, I don't understand. I'm a recently elected member of the MCC, my name's Howard Lieberman, and I twice have owned the largest company in Princeton. Founded a couple of companies that we couldn't find any space to expand, raised capital, were forced to move over the hill to San Mateo proper in order to run the business. So I'd like to just encourage the preservation of Princeton for some commercial use, not residential. There literally were no spaces in, on the whole coast side that had more than 5,000 square feet. So twice, I built the company up to about 40 people, then we had to move over the hill to get it up to 100 because the investors in the company would not permit us to stay on the coast because there was literally no building we could rent. We rented three smaller buildings and ran back and forth between them. So I'd just like to support keeping Princeton for some commercial use, not residential.
Thanks so kindly. Rick, I'm going to have an assistant check these out.
I promise I won't be on time next time.
Well, look the first time.
My name is Rick Lowman, and I'm part of the finding recognized district of Miramar, which is now in your design of use standards. I'll try to do this quickly. I'll basically be supporting the MidCoast Council position on all three colors here. I'm skipping CCR because we're agreeing with everybody on that. So again, I'm recommending approval of the MidCoast Council recommendation. We are talking here about, my general comment, these are residential uses in these different zonings. The first point I want to make is, let's point out for other people, is that these three zonings are very, 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 very small places. And over time, because of the flexibility of the zoning that's happened here over 25 years, a lot of what was intended to be these zonings has been turned into residential. And because of that and other issues, we're now running, I think Chuck said it, about 30% over the build-out rates at this point. So I was originally one of the people who said, no more residential in these areas. I've been pulled into the MidCoast Council view saying these are appropriate, but I think it would be a very bad idea to go even beyond these recommendations and do even more residential, because I think that's the problem, is that we just have too many residenials. Everybody, over time, here has said, I've been to a lot of, a lot of your folks' meetings in the past, has always said, my little additional residential use isn't causing the problem. And I don't know how many times I've heard that over the 10 to 12 years I've been here, because this is a cumulative thing, and that's how we ended up at 30% over the build-out numbers. Specifically on C1, the issue was the apartment buildings coming in, taking over the C1, and that's all been addressed. And that can be addressed by, I think, the MidCoast Council proposal, as modified by Paul there. My concern about the caretaker units is, first of all, this illusion everybody says is this improves the traffic situation on the coast. Adding a caretaker unit with a living space above it does nothing to help the traffic on the coast. It adds another residential unit. If it removed one from somewhere else, then you would be helping on the coast, but because that person made commuting less, all the other commuting is still happening, so that's kind of an illusion. One of the comments I'd like to support Princeton on here is, I had also made some notes about this allocation issue of who do you give these caretaker units to in the future? I would be even more concerned than them that I could see possibly another one of these black market things coming in where everybody just jumps and gets in line and grabs a caretaker permit ticket and then starts selling these on the black market too. So I would encourage people, however that occurs, however we create this fair system that they were representing, make sure it's just not used as another one of these black market things. Look, and I, yeah, I'd like to hold that 20% for the MidCoast Council because again, we can keep increasing residential on the coast here. Real quickly on the COSC, which was I'm 12, these are clearly split in the recommended uses. There's the preferred uses, everybody talks about, but I don't think George was quite clear enough. Residential is not one of the preferred ones. It's in the alternate category. It's definitely, even with the modifications of alternate. So as we stated when this property came to you folks about nine months ago, and you folks unanimously voted to reject that application, you have that new corridor, and you folks said at the time that it absolutely failed, that finding about the invasion of the corridor at that time. So I would support everybody else's comments who's made, to basically go back to what was the original local coastal program plan, which is to not have just that single one residential R1 and COSC zone. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Rick. You were at the staff, and I did too. When I get home, I will write 10 times, I will not ignore Rick's opinions. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have any further speakers, ladies and gentlemen, therefore, I hope there's nobody else lined up for me. Everybody is on us tonight, and therefore I think it's time that we can-
Hold it for the public hearing.
Yes, and I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Maybe before you, uh, your commission begins to deliberate, I have a slight revision to the staff recommendation, which was based on the clarification that Paul Perkovic made. And this, with this change, it would bring the staff recommendation in harmony with the MidCoast Council's recommendation. This relates, if you recall, to the C1 district, and there was that, I summarized it by calling it the however clause, or where it said that if the property was developed, you could never put residential on it. Then Paul clarified it was intended that if the property had residential on the ground floor, and then that was removed or it was converted to commercial, you could, his point, the council's point was, you could never reestablish residential on the ground floor. And that's completely in sync with our recommendation, and it's, I'm not sure if it's really necessary, but I'm willing to add it to make it as a clarification. So with that said, if you look at page one of the staff report, the cover page, and if we look at regarding task 10A, and at the end of the first sentence, a sentence that ends commercial floor area, I'm going to suggest an additional sentence that would bring us in harmony with the MidCoast Council, and that would be specifically, in cases where existing residential development on the ground floor is demolished or converted to commercial use, preclude reestablishing ground floor residential development on the site. So that's the proposed wording, and that would be consistent with what Paul has explained was the MidCoast Council's intent. It's, I don't have any further revisions to the staff recommendation from tonight's testimony besides that. I could go over that again, specifically, in cases where existing residential development on the ground floor is demolished or converted to commercial uses, preclude reestablishing ground floor residential development on the site.
And just so that I, even I understand, it does not preclude using the second floor. Does not preclude reestablishing residence on the second floor.
No, right, exactly. That was my problem in the beginning.
Simple things. I just wanted to make it very simple.
No, that's a very good point.
Thank you kindly.
Yes.
Gentlemen.
I'll be happy to take-
I'm sorry, Bill.
I'm sorry.
Can we just take these one at a time? Let's go down right, number, second, third, 10, 11, 12, if I can count.
I am ready for task 10. Okay.
Go.
I would like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation with the addition that George has covered. So that would be a four motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, all right. So that was easy. Now, you want to test 11. General, what say?
Actually, I'd like to make a proposal that we should go to skip 11 and just go to 12 and do another easy one.
Let's bite the bullet. Okay, okay, go ahead. Bill, why not?
I'd like to make a motion to-
We can discuss this.
Well, I can make a motion, we can discuss it.
Go ahead.
Like to make a motion to, you can tell them ready to go home. Like to make a motion to take the MCC recommendation, which is enact that no residential on the, i.e., for a single-family resident in the COSC district.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
If you believe it, unanimous.
Now you can, now we can go to number 11. Very good, very good, Bill. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a staff question again, just to refresh my fallible memory, but what in the heck is the airport plan for the Hefner Airport going to be completed? What is the status of that? Because this is-
I really can't say clearly that the description earlier tonight was basically correct, that the San Carlos plan needs to get through the Board of Supervisors first. I was talking to Deborah Hurst about that earlier. We were just sort of kibbasing about, is that going to happen? She told me that she had talked with Mark Larson in the airport office recently and was told it was almost ready to go. I think then if that were to move forward in the next few months, you know, you're looking at, I think, a significant effort on the coast side. If you follow what was done on San Carlos, there's the development of some basic alternatives. There's the preparation of probably some kind of environmental impact reporter assessment, and then, you know, following through with various decisions on that. So I feel like that's at least, you know, in the best of circumstances, probably a couple years' worth of those issues.
I'd like to add on to that. I talked to Dick Carbone. It's actually a two-step process. Terry's correct that up to what he covered, it probably would be two years to complete the airport master plan, but then, which is a county-produced document, then the ALUC has to put together its airport land use plan, where that's where the ALUC staff will develop the protection zones, using incorporating, or using as guidance, that manual, and that could add on another year to define those protection zones. So we're probably talking about three years.
Two, three.
After San Carlos.
You got what? We've had a number of issues in front of us this evening with respect to Princeton. One issue that has come up again is one that we discussed, I think, the last time, and that is to change the use pattern. And I guess I would repeat what I said the last time. We're driven to that particular use pattern by the coastal act, and we really can't do much about that this evening, or next week even. But in talking to people and looking at the map that Paul Perkovic gave to us this evening, and looking at the standards, the standards for airport zone are often expressed in terms of people per acre. And one of the things that strikes me is that that's not what we're applying under the current zoning. And it seems to me that that's an area where we could probably, without changing anything, would change interpretation, which might provide some opportunities for people that are not now provided. Because my understanding today is that if you own two parcels, together they're considered one parcel in terms of applying the regulation, which is three per parcel. If those parcels were people, three people, a parcel, whereas if they were in separate ownership, you would have six. Now, that strikes me as not being consistent with the kind of regulatory environment that the, what Paul handed out, suggested. And it seems to me that in the immediate future, we ought to see whether we can make some changes to that, see whether that provides some relief for the community, instead of the things we can't really change in the short run. That's probably something we might want to do in the future. So that the standards would be expressed in terms of number of people per area, number of employees per area, not per parcel.
Correct. I've talked to George about it. He suggested other ways we might do it in terms of standardized parcel size.
Yeah, I prepared it. I could share with you later.
I just wanted to, and I'd like to come back to that if we may, before everybody gets all worn out.
I guess I'm, in terms of what we actually have in front of us in terms of task 11, I guess I'm drawn to the staff recommendation to provide a little bit more opportunity for eyes on the street in that particular area. Listening to what George has talked about, it strikes me that, I know Rick isn't going to like this, but we're not talking about a heck of a lot of additional houses, and if it actually serves the purpose of bringing some more life to a district, I think that's also a planning purpose. I'm not necessarily, this is something I find myself being torn about. I'm sympathetic with the position that Commissioner Bomberger just outlined. I think the things that argue in the other direction, number one, of course, is until the airport issues resolve, there is a good argument for not doing anything that in any way increases any intensity of land use in that area. It's also been said that consistency is the hot dog on the small lines, and so, if I mean consistently, but I know the last time we made a decision about Princeton, I said, no, let's not do anything that will allow more use until we have the, or intensity of use until we have the airport issues resolved. I, I can see allowing some variance from that position. I don't want, the term variance is not a good word to use, it could be misunderstood. What I mean is some variation from that strict principle. One other thing, though, that does concern me, and I think the staff was sensitive to this, is that the extent we allow more and more residential use in the W area, we do run the risk of increasing land values to the extent that fishing, that marine-serving uses aren't economically practical in that area. And I think that's, that also, that and the safety from the airport have to be critical The limit at 35% may still be adequate to protect the viability of marine-serving uses. One thing I'm wondering, George, did you, were you able to determine how many caretaker's units we're talking about? I'm thinking that, just looking at the material we had from the field trip on Monday, we could derive that, which I hadn't myself yet, but perhaps you have.
Well, I guess I have given some thought, and I do have an answer. I think the material I gave you on, that we gave at the field trip-
Right.
That's based on where we are now at this level of development Princeton that is at, and I think what you're looking at is at the endpoint, with that build-out, how many caretaker quarters would there be under the 20 versus 35% scenario?
Yeah.
Right. And that was Commissioner Bomberger's original question. I recall from when I was actually developing build-out numbers, one of our earlier meetings, that at the 20% quota, I conclude there would be 25 caretaker quarters. If it was raised at 35%, just doing algebra during the break, it increases to 40 caretaker quarters.
About. Sometimes I always use about, maybe.
Approximately.
Also-
I'm attracted to the idea of increasing caretaker quarters at 35% to get more eyes on the street there. I think that's a very useful thing to do, and I still think that level would protect the marine-
that at the 20% quota, I conclude there would be 25 caretaker quarters. If it was raised at 35%, just doing algebra during the break, it increases to 40 caretaker quarters.
About. Sometimes always use about, maybe.
Approximately.
That's a lot.
Well, I know, I'm, uh, attracted to the idea of, uh, increasing caretaker quarters at 35% to get more eyes on the street there. I think that's a very useful thing to do, and I still think that level would protect the marine-related uses, if we want to keep that area viable for.
Uh, I'd just like to add that there isn't anything magical about the 35 number. I, I explained in my presentation that I was looking for a margin, as Commissioner Knowles just had indicated, I was looking at the same thing. I was trying to find a number that, uh, I thought would not adversely, uh, impact the desired uses. I came up with 35, it easily could be less of an increase, it could easily be 30, it could be 25. I mean, you may want to consider some numbers between 20 and 35.
There's one thing in here that bothers me, it's a word, live work, George. The reason is, uh, my, my office in San Francisco had a lot of live work, and, and I don't see anybody working in there, mainly who's just living. So I, I would prefer just to go ahead and use that word caretaker quarters and just leave off the live work. Um, I'm kinda, you know, as, as someone speaker mentioned, you know, this is one of the, uh, big, you know, uh, this W zone area is, is more of a industrial or light industrial area, and, and we need more, and, you know, we're talking about balancing job and residence. Uh, if, if you go 35%, then automatically you, based on my math, it's, you add 10 unit right away, 10 more units. And based on what you mentioned, uh, 40 will be maxed. Uh, I didn't, first of all, I didn't, I didn't know Princeton was that big. I thought it was just that one street down there to Barbara first trap, and that was it.
I, I would like to, I just started to interrupt, that, that when we talk about 40, we're talking about caretaker quarters of the W district, there are three types of residential units that are found in Princeton. As I mentioned, as you saw the tour, there are already 17 existing single-family dwellings. There is room for more mixed-use district, uh, mixed-use units at the CCR. There's currently four units, but there could be many more, and there isn't a limit of, just as long as it's the same square footage as the commercial below. And then there's the 35, 40, or whatever, caretaker quarters. So we're not talking about that being the, the total number of residential units in Princeton. That's just one of the three, and it's 40 caretaker quarters in addition to the single-family residences, in addition to the mixed-use units.
So, uh, based on my colleagues here regarding that, they have 35%, it's okay with them. I'm, I'm willing to go along with that.
George, um, one thing that, just on the question of, of preserving the viability of maritime serving businesses, um, is there, and certainly we saw on our field trip, there are maritime serving businesses that are back from the shore of it, and there may be no reason why maritime serving businesses would need to be concentrated at the shore. Is there any potential, and currently, the way the, uh, the caretaker units have been allocated, based on a first come, first served basis, is there any potential with 35% cap to, uh, have all the waterfront parcels occupied with caretaker, uh, parcels, and drive maritime part, serving uses out of the waterfront parcel? And would that be a problem? Would there be any reason to either have a lower percentage or to, uh, have a way of allocating these throughout the W zone and not allow them to be concentrated right at the shore or very close to? Given that all of the W areas...
No, I understand your question. I think I have an answer, at least in terms of concepts. We have said that, or I have stated that there's a concern that too much residential could change land values, that'd be more difficult for marine-related uses to establish themselves. We also know that the most preferred marine-related uses are the ones that are coastal-dependent, and that's, that are ones that need to be right on the water. And if, so putting those two things together, if there is a dynamic with land values, the, and the units are right on the water, and that's the area that's most needed for coastal-dependent marine-related uses, I would say that, uh, there may be wisdom in, uh, putting the units back from the waterfront, if that's what you're, where you were going.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is a small enough area, and that it's all readily accessible to marine use, I think.
And we've seen already on our trip that there were eight units in the, in the, on the shoreline.
Well, what, I want to see if I understand. George, are you saying that indeed you think there is some value in seeing the parcels that are not just near the shore, but the ones that are the closest to the shore are, remain available for marine serving uses?
Well, I would say...
Or are you saying it doesn't matter if they're, they're one street back? I mean, I thought I heard you saying the former, but the ground...
Right, right. With my understand, okay. I mean, when you have finite land area and you have certain uses that have to be on the water, let's say a boat haulout.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number one.
Number one. That has to be on the water. Boat repair can be back from the water.
Right. If you have a marine, uh, machine shopper, welding shopper, something like that supports marine use, it doesn't have to be right next to the water.
Right. That's correct. So what I'm saying is because we have a limited resource, and there are certain marine-related uses that are, what I use the term coastal-dependent, meaning they need to be on the water, I would say that that land on the water then is more valued for those priority uses than land that's further back, that it could, where they, they can accommodate the uses that don't need to be on the water. How that ties into the caretaker quarter units, I'm not sure. I just stated the general concern that too many residential units of that type, in that area, could affect land values to the detriment of the preferred use.
So, well, I guess what, what I am hearing now is you don't see any reason to allocate the caretaker units through, uh, so that they aren't, they don't concentrate on the coast, because they can see if, if there's a limited resource, uh...
Well, I, I guess...
Rent or value caretaker units, residential units might be highest if it's right on the shore.
Right. So I, I guess I...
And they'll, they'll move in that area, in which case that might mean that marine-related uses...
I'm agreeing with that. Okay, I'm, I'm saying that we know, I mean, we, we infer the land values to go up, and it could be a little bit critical, basically the detriment of the marine-related. We know that those value marine-related is around the coast. If you put those two together, maybe you would want, not, not want to have the housing near the coast.
Uh, now, I have a question. By referring to these as caretaker quarters, does that imply there's a requirement that the, whoever lives there be related to the business that's below it? And if you, you can't rent the business out to someone else and then live there?
Oh, really? The, yes, the current regulations say caretaker quarters in, in the provision that actually controls the establishment of that use, it says, "A permanent accessory residential unit shall be permitted for the purposes of housing a caretaker employed on the site."
Hmm, okay.
That's in the current regs.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about, um, the sort of risk of overregulation here. I, I, there's, in my experience, there's theory and reality, and there's, uh, there are limits to what we can really practically control on the ground in a community day to day. You know, I think you saw that in Princeton, if you walk around there, um, the counties wrestled with Princeton for years, sometimes more, sometimes less, and Princeton largely goes on the way it's gone on. You know, there's, there's a community there that's, that it sort of is what it is. The question of limiting caretaker units to non-waterfront parcels, I can understand the logic in that. On the one hand, if you're going to book, build a, um, boat haulout, that needs access to the, to the water. On the other hand, um, if that facility includes an office building in the corner to manage the boatyard, what's the harm in there being a caretaker unit above that if that spot on the ground is already consumed by an office? And so I, um, I just think that the, that the, and, and that person, I can see them coming back to us and saying, "I'm the one who needs someone here watching. I have a boatyard full of expensive boats, um, I'm committed to care for by their owners, um, I've got this airspace above my office building that's of no practical use or any other purpose. Why can my neighbor across the street have a caretaker unit and I can't?" And then we're left at the counter to explaining, "Well, you know, this is a waterfront area that was reserved for boat businesses, and even though you're a boat business, uh, you can't..." You know, I think we start slicing and dicing this a little too finely, and that's where the community starts to get frustrated. If they, they, ideally, they should be able to see that the law and common sense are sort of on the same page, and that's where I get a little...
I think you misunderstood what I was, what the idea I was explaining, Terry.
Okay. Well, I thought we...
I, I just wanted to add one thing before you grab the mic, that, uh, whatever the outcome of this discussion, in terms of, uh, how operationally or administered, how the commission would be administered, the existing W ordinance has already listed the permitted uses, and it has two columns. It says shoreline area and inland area, inland area. Currently, caretaker quarters are permitted in both the shoreline area and the inland area. If your commission wanted to change that, it would be, in terms of the administrative difficulty, it would be very difficult, because we have the columns already set up, certain uses. There are distinctions made between shoreline area and inland area to protect the shoreline area already.
What I was thinking of, and Terry, I really appreciate what you were saying, I wasn't suggesting not allowing any caretakers on the shoreline properties, to say zero there, but I was just concerned, what if we have an unintended effect that, uh, if we're allowing 35% of the W area to have caretaker units, and what if they all, this all gravitate take toward the shoreline area so that all the shoreline parcels have caretaker units? And then the prices rise of those parcels to the, to the effect that certain maritime uses that need to be on the shore are no longer economically viable? Now, maybe a boat haulout isn't viable in any case, given that the one that was there is closed, the harbor isn't cooperating, but if the land values rise even further, that certainly means that it probably will continue to be unviable. And I just wondered if, and again, this was just exploring the idea, I'm certainly not, uh, I've done tentativeness about this myself, not strongly advocating, but I wanted to explore with staff and with the commission, is there any value of saying that a certain percentage of the shoreline parcels should remain, that we, again, that we wouldn't want 100% of that going up with caretaker parcels? Maybe it can be a concern, and I don't want to make this more complex than it might be, but I certainly wasn't thinking of saying zero caretaker, caretaker, uh, units on the shoreline properties. Just that there, guaranteeing, again, there might be some distribution throughout the area. And again, I don't, I don't feel dogmatically about it, but I just wanted to clarify the, the idea that I was putting up as a trial balloon, and really only, only that.
Well, I mean, the proposal was tough to make at this hour of the evening, but, um, if that's something that we ought to think about, I think we ought to think about it before we just do what's next, and that is to say we want some options, so we want to go back to it.
Well, and I, I'd be happy to defer to staff, and if staff feels like that, the, what I'm worrying about is something we need be concerned about, I'm happy to offer.
What I, no, what I'm hearing here from the commissioners kind of going up and down the table is, um, that you're, on this item, which I think is a blue sheet...
Yes, that's correct.
...stake in, is that you're, you're tending to focus in on the staff recommendation. Um, I've heard, um, perhaps drop the live work, uh, terminologies, and just leave it at caretaker, since that seems to be complicated enough. Um, I was, I haven't heard any discussion about the non-conforming parcel part of this, so that's, I'm assuming the commission is generally in agreement with that, that that might be something we'd want to check out. And then maybe on the third point, um, rather than trying to set a particular percentage right now, or, uh, you know, continue this discussion about this geographic distribution, you might say that for the time being, since we have to bring the details back to you at some point anyway, that you're, um, interested, you know, that your general direction would be to, to increase the, um, percentage, and you'd like to see some alternatives in that regard, and that you'd like to see some, uh, strategies that might address a proper or an appropriate geographic distribution of these caretaker units, and avoid their concentration in, um, in any particular area of the community towards some undesirable end. And we could, when we bring back the, uh, regulations, that, you know, the main thing we're trying to do now is, is give some focus to Georgia's next round of work, which is developing the policies and the regulations that would implement each of these tasks. And I think that would, um, would kind of focus us on, we're, we are talking about changing the percentage upward, we are talking about, um, perhaps not allowing them on, on non-conforming parcels, and that we would be maintaining the existing size limit, and so George would bring back some alternatives around the percentage, as he said, if that number wasn't magical. And he could tell you some of the, we could do some of the math...
Right, the application.
Say, you know, here's, you've got X number of plain residences, you've got X number of caretaker units, X number of, uh, what do you call them?
X use units.
And if you change the percentage from 20 to 25, 30, 35, 40, this is what change in mix you're going to get. And then I think you're quite as well taken, you're talking about having an appropriate geographic distribution of these units to have the benefit of the security they provide, and to avoid, um, adversely affecting the sort of maritime uses in these areas.
And, and I think, yeah. Certainly, go ahead, please. Use this stuff. Uh... Well, this one's, this one's already on, so I'll use it. Um, the, uh, certainly if all the units concentrate, end up concentrating in one area, then you don't have the security effect of having people, 24, or people who are there in the evening and night sprinkle throughout the area and see what's going on.
Uh, yeah, I would agree.
But if it gets, if, if crafting an ordinance to guarantee that is just too complicated and bureaucratic, cumbersome, I'm certainly happy to give up my address and do the simple thing.
Well, I think to reinforce Terry's proposal, but maybe give you a little guidance in terms of what to do tonight, I would recommend that you continue to deliberate and consider 2A, B, and D. Oh, I'm sorry, this is on my recommendation in the staff report, pages one and two. Wrestle, continue to wrestle with, uh, 2A, B, and D, and then proceed direct staff to return with, um, various options and their implication for different gradation, different increment, increments of increase from, uh, 20% to 35, and what implication would have on the number of units, and also, uh, evaluate different alternatives as to distribution of caretaker quarters, uh, in manners to mindful of best protecting the intent of the district, and we could come back and work and see in a couple of months.
So move.
Second.
He said we should deliberate.
We could deliberate. Okay, well, the only clarification would be is...
I, I, I just, I, I move what George said, that I'm leaving out the deliberate, because we may not need it.
Okay, the last thing is, there has been some mention of dropping, uh, live work uses and maintaining the caretaker quarters. I think it's a clarification on that, that you would want to do that.
I would recommend we stay with caretaker. I think it has a specific kind of meaning, and there's language that describes how it applies. We don't want to have anything new tonight.
Okay.
So, do you understand Commissioner Silver's motion?
Yes, I think, I think it was a concurrence of what I had said. I'll restate it, I'll restate the motion like the maker, but anyway. restate the motion like the maker, but anyway. Um, so with the commission, the motion for the commission is to maintain the name caretaker quarters, to prohibit caretaker quarters on non-conforming parcels that are less than five, i.e. less than 5,000 square feet, and maintain the existing caretaker quarter size limit, which is 35% building floor area, not exceed 750 square feet, and direct staff to return, um, at the wrap-up session with , uh, analysis of, uh, first of all, with the present, uh, development of, uh, different options to increase the limit from 20 to 35 different increments, and the implication, specifically the implication in terms of the number of total units in Princeton that build out with the different numbers, and also to explore, uh, uh, different geographic allocations or arrangements, or district, to explore different geographic distributions of permitted, uh, caretaker quarters. And we'll come back with that.
So I think you have a motion in a second.
We do.
We have a motion, we have a second. Paul Strager.
Aye.
So move.
May I ask one thing? May I ask one thing? Minor question. This is just a minor question because, uh, I just, it worries me. I'm always afraid of unintended consequences. And when we put these, uh, units out, I don't want to stand, start a land rush. How do we fairly and equitably see that they are distributed? And that's your problem. In other words, that's not our problem here tonight. But that's something that you'll have to figure out.
All right.
So that one person doesn't grab up whatever's available, I don't imagine is very much available. I'm speaking from ignorance here, because I do not know the area, but that sort of worries me.
Well, we could incorporate that also.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it's part of the-
I just wanted to make sure that that was covered.
Okay.
Um, there's just one other thing we need to cover tonight. I'm gonna sort of reserve George here. You, you received, and the audience, I think, received, right, George?
Yes.
They revised schedule for advancing the LCP update project during 2004. Basically, we just did a little bit of analysis against the board supervisor's schedule next year, and realized that we had, um, a little bit of room to kind of slow down this process at the planning commission without compromising its movement through the board on the same schedule. And so, um, the pace has been a little difficult for George and county council to keep up with. So we developed a new schedule. Uh, I think you all got it. If you didn't, you can get it from George. And, uh, absent some objection from the commission, we're simply gonna follow that new schedule. And with that, um, I think we're done.
And before we are done, I just want to thank each and every one of you tonight, and, uh, I appreciate all you've done. Oh, have we finished yet? I thought, I've been overruled again. I don't know why I'm in this position.
I apologize, Mr. Terry.
Uh, George, George had, uh, going to the-
Trouble to, to think about what we might want to do in the AO zoning district administration. And, um-
I just put it on the screen.
Why don't you put it on the screen? It may be that what we really need to do is to schedule this for a discussion, um, with, because people haven't seen it, and I think it's not proper to do things that people haven't seen. But my issue really is that we schedule talking about this soon.
Maybe I, just if you want to, I just, to go with you. Uh, the concern that Commissioner Bomberger had raised earlier in the evening tonight was, uh, he was looking at areas where we could make change. He was talking about areas where we could make change, like flight zones and things like that. And, uh, he was referring to the limit on land use density in the AO zone that sets maximum development density in the AO zone at three persons per site, and that is the wording in the ordinance. And he, he had asked, uh, me to consider different, uh, administrative approaches that, uh, could allow different results related to, and actually more flexibility, and for, and also flesh out what is meant by site, so we could get a better handle on how many people could be allowed per area. That was pretty much the theme. The, the approach that I took, and follow my logic by reading this, uh, was I looked at the minimum parcel size. The minimum parcel size in the W district is 5,000 square feet. Now, in the W district, in the AO, uh, the W district is the underlying district, the AO is the overlay. In the AO overlay, uh, the parcels that are affected by it, sometimes you have one person who owns, uh, 10,000 square feet, 12,000 square feet, and that's one site. And the way we've been applying it, it would be three persons. And you could have a person who owns 5,000 square feet, and he'd be one, one site, three persons. Or you could have, um, multiple parcels, sometimes parcels are called sites, that are all owned by the same person, and adds up to 20,000. And the way you could, is literally, that's a site, and it's three persons. So what I was thinking was, if this area was to be resubdivided, the minimum parcel size is 5,000 square feet. That's a reflection of the preferred density that's embodied in our general plan. It's included in policy, that you would have 5,000 square foot parcels. So I came up with a proposed policy that when determining the number of persons per site, it should be in intervals of 5,000 square feet, because those would be the size of the parcel if you were going to resubdivide. So the word you came up with, came up with as a possible policy is, when administering the AO district use intensity limit, which is a three-person limit, it shall be planning division policy that for a single parcel or multiple contiguous parcels in common ownership, ownership, a site equals 5,000 square feet, uh, private, uh, equals each 5,000 square feet parcel area. So you only have, to have two 5,000 square feet areas, you have to have 10,000 square feet. So you have one site up to 9,999. When you hit 10,000, you have, it would be like two 5,000 square foot parcels. That could be two sites. And then you're allowed six people. And then that goes up to the next interval of 5,000, where then you would have three sites and be allowed, uh, nine people, and so on. So this is the proposed policy I came up with to provide a little, uh, I think, a little more uniformity in application, a little more fairness, and also be a little less restrictive. Sure.
This is something you stood, I kind of want.
Okay. This is, as Commissioner Bomberger indicated, maybe best to schedule this for a future, as a future discussion item. This is being shown for the first time to everybody. It's something that I worked out in the last couple of days of chatting with Terry, and I'm now kind of sharing it, um, as a proposed policy.
Point for clarification, does this mean that if a site is less than 5,000 square feet, as I believe most of the sites are, just in, in the parcels in Princeton, they would not be considered to be sites?
No, it says up to 9,999. Up to means-
No, less than 5,000, I'm asking.
I know, but up to goes, it includes that. So it's basically from zero to 9,999.
Is it the minimum parcel size?
But I, I think the point is well taken. This needs, needs some discussion, and I think it needs to be, you know, properly noted.
Okay, I, I could say the actual parcel size versus the middle, the minimum is the regulatory, uh-
Yeah, well, just on a couple of points, what, you know, on a site that says up to 9,999 square feet, one site, three people, um, no one is gonna be, the fact that your parcel's substandard doesn't prevent you from having use of it. That's a fundamental some of it.
It would, it would still be at least one site, even if it's less than 5,000.
My suggestion about this would be Commissioner Bomberger identified the issue earlier this evening. George has laid out some preliminary thoughts about that. I think the logical thing to do would be to bring this back, you know, as an appropriate point next year, if nothing else, when we bring back sort of the final Princeton wrap-up. But maybe we can find an opportunity to do it before that, and George can prepare perhaps a simple, convert this into a simple memo that could be shared with everybody at that point. And, um, uh, we will, we will schedule this for, um, I think this gets it on, on the agenda for, uh, further analysis and discussion, and we'll find a time for it in 2004 and bring it back.
One, one thing that I just want to throw out right now, so that this, uh, can come back, this idea also can come back at that appropriate point, is, uh, it occurs to me that one other way to slice this would be to, uh, if you, if you, if, if currently, one, yeah, I just, I was hearing the, the feedback. One, if one side, I'll try to ignore the feedback. Uh, if, if one side, if three people are allowed on any given site, and we're talking about identifying that with the 5,000 square foot minimum parcel size, another way to do this would be to say that for each, to divide that 5,000 by three, and for each increment of 1,667 feet, um, that there would be one per, one person allowed on the, on the site. So if someone has, uh, uh-
That's another way of doing it.
It, and that, that would actually be a tad more generous. Uh, you know, and I, and I have no-
And have more data points, it'd probably be more equitable, too. Because here you gotta go all the way up to just a hair under the tie, 10,000 to-
Right, right. Whereas if someone had 7,000 square feet, they would have four employees on the, on the parcel, and, and so on.
I'll work the math for the wrinkle, so I can have different options to see if they will. Thank you.
Now, this is your, now you're having-
Right. Well, and once again, last attempt to thank all of you for coming tonight. Wish you all well in this holiday season, and for heaven's sake, drive home safely tonight. It's not very good out there, I don't think. Thank you again.
Everybody to the March 17th, 2004 regular meeting of the San Mateo County Local Agency Formation Commission. I would ask the clerk to please call the role.
Commissioner Bay?
Here.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Here.
Commissioner Gordon?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Here.
Chairman Richardson?
Here. Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge the ultimate special district member, Robert Craig, present in the audience. As a matter of fact, he was also present at the Hatton Bay. Thank you. Consent agenda. Okay, it has been brought to my attention that the agenda that was posted on the LAFCO website last week incorrectly listed approval of the action minutes from March 9, and that those minutes are not yet ready for commission consideration. The commission and those on the mailing list receive the correct agenda, and correct agendas are available at the back of the room. To avoid any confusion, I would like to make a motion to remove the minutes of the March 9 from the consent agenda and continue that item to the next meeting.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, uh, if you may, um, looking at the items we have before us today, of course, we're continuing, uh, item three from the Hatton Bay meeting, but we also have on here, uh, item four, which relates to the budget. And I know that some of the district people and so on, uh, are here to, to see exactly what action we take on the budget. I, I would like, with your permission, to, uh, to move this item up to be considered first, and I would make a motion to do that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Having done that, I think the one thing we haven't yet done is actually adopt the consent agenda, since we removed one item, but we didn't then adopt the rest of it. So I would move, uh, approval of the consent agenda, item A regarding the January 21st minutes, item B, uh, LAFCO file 0401, and item C, LAFCO file 040.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, we're going to deal with the item number four in the new matters section. And I'd like to request the staff to make any comments that they'd like to.
Brief.
Brief?
Brief.
Yes, very briefly, um, members of the commission, you have a staff report dated March 10th, 2004, that provides background on the commission's, um-